Testes.
Ladies and gentlemen, good morning. We could all be seated and we'll begin this meeting of the Pima County Board of Supervisors. Good morning. Thank you all so much for being here. We will, at this point, call on our clerk, Ms. Manriquez, to take role to establish quorum.
Supervisor Allen.
Here.
Supervisor Christie.
Here.
Supervisor Gruhalva.
Here.
Supervisor Heinz.
Chair Scott.
Here.
Let the record show Supervisor Heinz is not present. All other board members are present.
Thank you, Ms. Manriquez. We are now going to call forth Gladys Beebe, Administrative Assistant with the Stadium District, and she will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Everybody would please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Beebe, thank you very much. Would you and your colleague like to tell us anything exciting going on at the Stadium District? You're still recovering from the World Baseball Classic.
Yes, we are recovering from World Baseball, but we do have the TIG Tournament in now. We have another soccer tournament that starts next month in April. And so we're just kind of, sugar skulls are starting their training.
All right.
So it's a little lull before we start getting busy again, but it's always enjoyable.
You get very few lulls, I imagine.
No. Yeah, very few.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks so much for being here and for all your hard work.
Thank you.
All right, you bet. All right, and for those of us who have worked in Tucson Unified School District, it is a great privilege to welcome, to deliver the land acknowledgement statement, Maria C. Federico Brummer, the Director of the Mexican-American Student Services Department. Welcome, so delighted to see you.
Thank you, Chair Scott. I've been asked by Supervisor Gruhalva, and it's with a heavy heart that I stand here before you today. Appreciation for, appreciation for your family's commitment to our, to our community. Qualitanale, Michpanseko Namatoka Maria, Chana Federico Brummer, Nisiwapi Li Shochi, Nikal Politeo Shikalila Manalka. So, good morning, everyone. I'm Maria. Just grateful to be able to be here to provide this land acknowledgement today. On behalf of Pima County residents, we honor the tribal nations who have served as caretakers of this land from time immemorial, and respectfully acknowledge the ancestral homelands of the Taan Aotam Nation and multi-millennial presence of the Pasco Yaki tribe within Pima County. Consistent with Pima County's commitment to diversity and inclusion, we strive towards building equal partner relationships with Arizona's tribal nations.
Thank you very much. At this point, I would like to turn it over to Supervisor Gruhalva for a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Chair Scott. I just wanted to say publicly how appreciative me and my family have been for all of the outpouring of love and support with the passing of my dad. It is, it's really been all about the love. It's been so kind, and, and we're just really honored that so many people have reached out to just say how much he's meant to them personally. And so if you would join me in having a moment of silence for Raoul M. Gruhalva. Thank you very much. I'm a very ugly crier, so I'm trying not to. It's not a cute look, but I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Supervisor Gruhalva. And I just wanted to ask members of the board, given Congressman Gruhalva's role in our community, if anybody else wanted to say anything on his behalf.
I know.
All right, well, I will, I will say, Supervisor Gruhalva, that it won't surprise you to know that the very first time I met your father, which was well over 20 years ago, I said, hello Congressman Gruhalva, it's a great honor to meet you. He stopped me and said, please, Raoul. I also wanted to say that as a, as a career educator, I was always deeply grateful for the advocacy that he consistently demonstrated on behalf of children, the schools that they attended, and, and their interest overall, and our condolences to you and your family.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will do that at call to the public. Thank you very much. Okay, I would also like to recognize Supervisor Christie for a moment of personal privilege.
Education being a, a common topic here, I just want to take a moment to announce that Empire High School in the Vail School District, in District Four, has been ranked number one in Arizona by the State Board of Education, and this includes the entire state of Arizona, and this ranking also includes public charter and private schools. Way to go Ravens, thank you.
Thank you very much Supervisor Christie. We'll now go back to the regular agenda with pause for pause, and we are going to have a video presentation this month.
This is my buddy Boston. He's a three-year-old. He came in as a stray. He's been in a couple of foster homes. He's been with children. We'd love to get him out in a, in a home with another animal, test him out, and get him adopted out of here. We got about 475 other dogs, and Boston's already been adopted out. We've got a great promotion going on for St. Patrick's Day right now, so come on out and get a $50 discount in our store. Get yourself a family, family member.
All right, thank you very much. We'll turn it back now to Ms. Manriquez, our clerk, to go over agenda adjustments.
Okay, on the regular agenda, page three, item eight, this is the executive session for Arizona Citizens Defense League. The county attorney's office requests this item be removed from the agenda. On page five, item 22, under Finance and Risk Management, this is the FY 2025-26 Capital Improvement Program and Overall Budget Development Overview. This item will be heard at a time soon of 11:00 a.m. On page five, item 23, under Superior Court, this is the Pima County Commission on Trial Court Appointments and Nominating Committee. This item will be heard at a time soon of 10:00 a.m. On the addendum, page one, items three, four, five, and six, these are the executive sessions. These items will be heard at a time soon of 12:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Manriquez. We're now going to go to presentations and proclamations. We have two on the addendum and one on the agenda, and because of time constraints for some of our citizens who are here today, we are going to move first to addendum item number two. This is presentation of a proclamation to Dante Salario, Flux Productions, Victor Valencia, Building Out Safer Spaces, and Daniel and Lizette Trujillo, Families Transformed, proclaiming the day of Monday, March 31, 2025, to be Transgender Day of Visibility in Pima County. I will move the item.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the item passes 3-0 because Supervisor Christie had left the dais and Supervisor Heinz is not present. Supervisor Allen will read the proclamation, and if anybody would like to... Supervisor Allen will read the proclamation, and if anybody would like to join Supervisor Allen and, and her guests, welcome them to do so.
So, I am incredibly honored, on behalf of the Pima County Board of Supervisors, that we are declaring March 31, Transgender Day of Visibility. This is the least that we can do, as communities get pushed into the shadows, that does none of us any good. It only does harm, generational levels of harm, right? So this proclamation is an effort to say for the, to transgender community that we see you in all your dignity and humanity, you're welcome here in Pima County and have a seat at the table, and that you are loved by friends, family, neighbors, coworkers, and all of us who call this community home. So I, with that, I want to read the proclamation. We have one in English, we also have one in Spanish. So we proclaim, whereas there are over 1.6 million transgender, non-binary, and gender non-conforming youth and adults across the United States, whereas Pima County strives to constantly support, embrace, and cherish transgender, non-binary, and gender non-conforming people who contribute greatly to our society, our members, our members of our families, workplaces, and communities, and are worthy of love, understanding, acceptance, and respect. And whereas, Pima County recognizes that transgender, non-binary, and gender non-conforming members of our community are often and increasingly discriminated against and disproportionately affected by hate crimes and violence, and are experiencing significant political attacks by extremists legislating hate in our state legislature and in our Congress. And whereas, Pima County honors and commemorates the strength, commitment, and immense efforts of those working for equity and justice for transgender, gender non-conforming, and non-binary people. And whereas, Transgender Day of Visibility helps promote inclusion of transgender, non-binary, and gender non-conforming individuals in society, including in media politics and other public spheres. And whereas, Transgender Day of Visibility serves to celebrate transgender, non-binary, and gender non-conforming people everywhere, and combats disinformation, discrimination, and hate impacting our community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Pima County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims the day of Monday, March 31, 2025, to be Transgender Day of Visibility in Pima County, and calls upon all our residents to recognize and commend its observance, passed and adopted this 18th day of March, 2025. At a time like this, visibility takes work, and visibility is a struggle. So I also wanted to acknowledge the leadership of those who are here today and are pushing forward the effort of visibility. Flux Productions and Dante Salario, Victor Valencia, TC Tolbert and Building Out Safer Spaces, Families Transformed, Daniel Trujillo and family, Kindred Connections and Tea Loving, Melo Dominguez and Melissa Brown Dominguez, John Peter Willhite, Abby Jensen, Erin Russ, Mariposa Sin Fronteras, Dylan and Sierra Heinzler and family, Adrian Islas and Duarte family, Violet Dumont and family, Outlaw Project and Monica Jones, Dr. Russell Toomey, Familia TQLM, Janice Sett Gutierrez, Dr. Eric Clemmons, and CPLC, Nawee O'Leary, Coza Mayol Program. Thank you all. I would like to, morning, and if anybody would like to, anybody like to offer anything more?
Allen, my name is Abby Jensen. I'm a retired Pima County Public Defender, former General Counsel of the Southern Arizona General Alliance, which is sadly passed. I think I first appeared before this commission in 2018 to ask that the county adopt a nondiscrimination policy to include transgender and gay and lesbian people, and some other things. The county did those things. They added gender identity and sexual orientation to the county's employment, internal employment nondiscrimination policy. They changed the county employee health insurance policy to cover gender-affirming treatment for trans people. One thing that we asked for that was not done, however, and still needs to be done, is the county needs to adopt a countywide nondiscrimination ordinance that includes LGBTQ plus people. There is no reason the county should not have such an ordinance. We need that protection to cover private employment and public accommodations throughout the county. Thank you.
Okay. May we get a little photo, squeeze in?
I just wanted to say thank you to the board and thanks to everyone that helped set this up. I'm really grateful that our community, that Pima County, that Tucson is a safe place for all people, especially in this time when a lot of people would rather choose ignorance and choose to ignore us, even when we're all standing right in front of them. And so, thank you. I'm honored. It's grateful.
Chair Scott, for the record Supervisor Heinz has joined today's meeting. He is participating remotely.
All right, thank you Supervisor Heinz. We know you are traveling internationally. Hope you're doing well this morning. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we are going to go back to the regular agenda, and this is agenda item number six, Presentation of a Proclamation to Kelly Maslin, Assistant Director, Pima County Economic Development, Liz Pocock, CEO, and Megan Fink, Program Manager, Startup Tucson, Kevin Burke, Deputy Director, City of Tucson Office of Economic Initiatives, Jessica Suskind, CEO, Tucson Young Professionals, and Kristi Street, Senior Vice President, Southern Arizona Leadership Council, proclaiming the week of March 25 through March 30, 2025, to be Ten West Week in Pima County. I will move the item.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Item passes 5-0, and just so our audience knows, when Supervisor Heinz is participating remotely, he gives a thumbs up or thumbs down to indicate how he is voting. I will present the proclamation. And Ms. Maslin, thank you for bringing this forward to our office, very much appreciate it. All right, whereas Pima County recognizes Startup Tucson is a leader in the innovation and entrepreneurial ecosystem, supporting 3,000 entrepreneurs a year as they launch and grow their businesses in Pima County, and resulting in a lifetime impact to the Southern Arizona economy since 2012 of nearly 1,000 new jobs, more than $280 million in funding for small businesses and startups, and, whereas, Pima County and Tucson have a thriving innovation ecosystem with partners including Pima County Economic Development, City of Tucson Economic Initiatives, Arizona Commerce Authority Innovation Team, University of Arizona Tech Launch, Arizona, McGuire Center for Entrepreneurship, University of Arizona Center for Innovation, Pima Community College, Community Investment Corporation, Tucson Young Professionals, Local First Arizona, Southern Arizona Leadership Council, Growth Partners Arizona, and others, how could there be any others? And, whereas, Ten West, founded in 2015 by Startup Tucson, hosts a week-long professional development summit and festival in downtown Tucson, offering a unique blend of a conference and community festival, exploring cutting-edge trends in technology, entrepreneurship, and creativity, ultimately providing participants with actionable strategies, valuable industry insights, and meaningful connections to grow their businesses, expand their networks, and make a lasting difference in their careers and communities. And whereas, Ten West attracts thousands of attendees each year, convening the largest gathering of startup and innovation ecosystem attendees and partners, including government, academia, funders, investors, collaborators, founders, startups, small businesses, and entrepreneurial support organizations, no others this time, in Southern Arizona. Now therefore be it resolved that the Pima County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims the week of March 25 through March 30, 25, to be Ten West Week in Pima County. Congratulations. Are you going to be the spokesperson? All right.
All right, thank you, Board, for recognizing Ten West. We are thrilled that Ten West is celebrating its 10th year in Southern Arizona. I invite all of you to come out and celebrate innovation and the entrepreneurial ecosystem with us, starting on the 25th. We could not do this without our partners. So Startup Tucson does organize the festival, but we have over 40 partners that help us bring this festival to life. A lot of them are standing here today in our bright Ten West colors. We promise that you will be inspired if you come and join us next week. You can learn more at tenwest.com. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. All right, congratulations. We have one more presentation and proclamation. This is addendum item number one, Presentation of a Proclamation to Courtney Slanicker, Executive Director, and Gail Patrillo, Board Chair, American Red Cross, proclaiming the month of March 2025 to be Red Cross Month in Pima County. I will move the item.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Supervisor Christie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes 5-0, and I believe you are reading this proclamation Supervisor Gruhalva? All right.
Okay, whereas, this March, we celebrate American Red Cross Month by recognizing the compassionate acts of people in Pima County and by renewing our commitment to lend a helping hand to our neighbors. And whereas, since Clara Barton founded American Red Cross more than 140 years ago, generation after generation has stepped up to deliver relief and care across our country and around the world, bringing the best of humanity in times of crisis. And whereas, advancing this mission, Red Cross volunteers, blood and platelet donors, and supporters who now give back through American Red Cross Southern Arizona chapter remain unwavering in their commitment to prevent and alleviate human suffering in the face of today's emergencies. And whereas, the Red Cross has responded to devastating series of natural disasters, providing aid to those in need. And whereas, in 2024, over 60 Pima County Red Cross volunteers responded to the catastrophic wildfires and subsequent flash floods in Rio Dozo, New Mexico. Later in the year, Pima County Red Cross volunteers deployed to the East Coast to assist communities impacted by hurricanes Milton and Helene, offering care, comfort, and emergency services. And whereas, most recently, Pima County American Red Cross volunteers mobilized to help those affected by the destructive and deadly wildfires in the Los Angeles area. And whereas, every day, over 500 ordinary individuals lend a helping hand to make an extraordinary difference for neighbors in need. And whereas, the volunteers and generous contribute, generous contributions shine a beacon of hope on people in their darkest hours, whether it's delivering shelter, food, and comfort during disasters, providing critical, critical blood donations for hospital patients, supporting service members, veterans, and their families, saving lives with first aid, CPR, AED, and other skills, or delivering international aid and reconnecting loved ones separated by global crises. And whereas, this work to uplift our community is truly made possible by those who selflessly answer the call to help whenever and wherever it's needed. Now therefore be it resolved that the Pima County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims the month of March 25 to be Red Cross Month in Pima County, and encourages all citizens in Pima County to reach out and support its humanitarian mission, passed and adopted this 18th day of March, 2025. Thank you. Supervisor Gruhalva and members of the board, thank you so much, and to everybody in the public, thank you for supporting the American Red Cross mission through your donations of time, talent, treasure, and your blood and platelets. As we move into the summer months, we just want to remind everybody, these are our toughest times to collect blood. Schools are out, our nurses at the College of Nursing are hopefully taking a break, and so we really call on the public to roll up a sleeve. It's a very small amount of your time to ensure that we have a stable and diverse blood supply supporting Southern Arizona. Thank you so much for all your support. Thank you Supervisor Gruhalva.
Thank you.
We're back on the regular agenda, item number seven, Call to the Public. Here are rules and regulations. Citizens attending the meeting shall observe rules of propriety, decorum, and good conduct. Citizens attending the meeting shall observe rules of propriety, decorum, and good conduct. Any person making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks, or who becomes boisterous while addressing the board, may be removed by the Sergeant-at-Arms if directed by the Chair. Such person may be barred from further audience before the Board. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping a feat, whistling, yells, and similar demonstrations shall not be permitted by the Chair, who may direct offenders from the hearing room. I will call the first three speakers. And if you're number two or number three, feel free to sit in the front and wait your turn. Our first speaker is Dave Smith.
Mr. Chair, how many minutes are allowed?
I apologize. Thank you Supervisor Christie. There are nine speakers, so each speaker will have three minutes. Thank you for asking. Our first speaker is Dave Smith, followed by Lori Moore and Gisela Aaron.
All right, thank you. Good morning, gang. You know, I had a whole thing prepared, and then my wife reminded me going out the door this morning that I needed to express our sympathies. You know Supervisor Gahalva, my wife reminded me that a father and his daughter are a unique relationship. It's the most important thing. And my wife reminded me that her father had an extended illness. And when he passed, she said, it still is hard. And it's remember that, remind you that in our family, we understand and our condolences to you. All right, forget the, now we're back in politics. Okay, I tell you. One of the problems we've seen is, of course, democracy, democracy, democracy is quite angry about taxes, taxes, taxes. The defeat of 414 gave us a classic example. The people of Pima County, and the majority of your people reside in Tucson, wholeheartedly, regardless of party. That was a complete rejection, 70 to 30 essentially. And the problem is, is we keep talking, and I've been talking for several years now, the need to find alternate or innovative solutions to these social issues. You know, we still have poverty. We've always had poverty. Yet the question's become, how do you solve it? How do you solve the drug problem? And we, as we're seeing funds changing, we're seeing people saying, look, find solutions again where we can, once again, there has to be a balance. Originally, poverty was predicted to be something by the individual's cause alone. And then we changed it completely where the individual has no control over their destiny. As Dr. Martin Slegman talked about and learned helplessness, what we did is we take the locus of control, or control of lives from the people who are poor, drug addicted, or other issues, and said, oh, here, we're going to give that control to government. That never solves it. There has to be a balance where we give people back control of their lives, whether it's drug addiction, alcoholism, or poverty. One of the things that shocked me as a young police officer, I come, again, I graduated from the University of Arizona, highly idealistic young man with my minor in sociology, and I'm finding a lot of the things that I absolutely believed were completely incorrect. What you have so often I had seen, you arrest somebody for drunk driving, which quite honestly, folks, the gang, as we all know, the courts were very lackadaisical about it. And sometimes it was that arrest that caused them to solve their alcohol addiction. There has to be a balance between an individual's responsibility and culpability and society's role. And I challenge you to think about that as we limit those funds that are coming here. You know Supervisor Christian, I talked about this issue before. We need to have a businessman's mindset in some of these solutions, because essentially you're selling people on their own, on their own destiny, their own future. So again, in the next couple of years, I think we're going to see that social rejection of taxation. Pima County is the highest taxed county. And I ask you to think about novel, business-oriented solutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Ms. Moore?
Adalita, my condolences, the passing of your father. My name is Lori Moore. I am wearing snazzy prison attire for anybody who is wondering what one would wear when one is serving time for aiding, abetting, and harboring illegals. Pima County Dems on the Board of Supervisors, including Sharon Bronson, took federal money and used it like sanctuary city mayors. Only here, it's referred to as immigrant-friendly practices. You lured unvetted squatters, sex traffickers, drug dealers, and criminals to cross our border. NGOs like Catholic Charities and Casas Alitas were paid very well, and the invasion was on. Things were going as planned, except for the part about keeping track of those 600,000 unvetted illegals and their non-existent sponsors, and the missing 300,000 children nationwide that are now possibly victims of sex trafficking. That went wrong. Apparently, the foot soldiers were only focused on changing the color of America and hoping to secure Democrat voters. So the feds are now withholding $51 million from Pima County until they get the names and locations of the 600,000 illegal asylum seekers. It appears you will have to cut some programs. May I suggest the Peeps program first? There will no longer be a need to babysit for low-income non-citizens anymore. Anna Paulina Luna questioned sanctuary city mayors, and by their testimony, she turned them over to the Attorney General Pam Bondi for criminal investigation. Apparently, giving illegal border-crossers food, clothing, shelter, money, and transportation is, by definition, aiding, abetting, and harboring. Who knew? Supervisor Christie knew. He said no to all of it. 80 million people who voted for Donald Trump knew. AG Bondi should interview immigrant-friendly mayors and supervisors next. The chickens have come home to roost.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. We'll hear from Ms. Aaron in a second, but wanted to let you know that our next three speakers after Ms. Aaron will be Tim Lox, Susie Lorenson, and Shirley Requard. Ms. Aaron.
Good morning. Sorry about your father's loss, Adalita. My father passed away 10 years, and he had cancer, so I understand. Sorry. Good morning. My name is Gisela Aaron. I live in District Four. And I've submitted a comment in November 7, 23, and I would like to read it again into the records and for the benefit of Supervisor Allen. She may not have heard that. At the time, I said, I do not consent to spend my taxes this way. You are bankrupting America on purpose. Once again, I must call you out frequently and warn you about your continued reliance on IGA federal grants. When you accept federal grants, there is always federal conditions mandated, and you are thereby voluntarily relinquishing local jurisdiction and laws for federal control and laws. You have betrayed us and sold us out to bankrupt America, to overthrow the United States for foreign control, such as the United Nations, the One World Order, the Bilderberg Group, the Pharma Industrial Complex, that profited from the pandemic, and the climate hysterics that mandate for us to restrict our use of gas and oil without any scientific basis nor solution. We suffered tremendously because you have not done your most basic research during the pandemic. Teresa Callen, Dr. Teresa Callen and Dr. Matt Heinz would probably know that in 2003, we already had SARS-CoV-1. And we survived it. We also have remedies since, and we have lifelong immunity for the ones that contracted it. During the pandemic, nobody listened to the scientists and repurposed medicines that were successfully treating, alleviating SARS-CoV-1 symptoms back then. Yet doctors were censored, blacklisted, their medical license suspended. In a real pandemic, one would use all treatments. One would protect the vulnerable and the elderly. They would stay home, but the rest would go on about their lives. We would have herd immunity, and scientific masking made no difference. Lockdowns intentionally crashed the economy and to affect the election. That's what I believe. And I warned about possible some new virus coming. Marburg virus was rumored, and we know that they are now talking about the measles outbreak. They had in 2005, 10, 15, and 19, these groups, these, the Bilderberg Group, the One World Order, and so on, the World Health Organization did scenario planning. They are, evidence is Operation Dark Winter, Atlantic Storm, Clayd X, Event 201. And you can read for yourself the 2005 pandemic influenza plan that HHS and 2010 Rockefeller Foundation sponsored.
Thank you, Ms. Aaron.
Anyway.
Your time's expired.
Evidence that this was not good.
If you have anything you want to submit in writing, please give it to the clerk staff, and it'll be passed on to the supervisors.
I did in 2023.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Aaron. Mr. Lox.
Good morning, Adalita. My condolences. I've been here a few times in the past asking this board to cut the crap. You've all seen this sign. For your benefit Supervisor Allen, CRAP is an acronym for culture, race, and American politics. It looks as though CRAP has gone full circle and done this to you guys. Okay? This board minus Supervisor Christie, not the people of Pima County, this board created this problem. This letter here, what a treasure. You've all seen it, I'm sure. 51, 52 million bucks. We have some questions about where's this money going to come from? Has it been paid already? Et cetera. Not only have you certified elections that we warn you not to certify, you had no, you've dug yourself another hole. Ms. Leisher? I don't care if your predecessor started this mess. You're every bit a part of it. Perhaps your resignation is in order. You've been given a list of questions, or you will be given a list of questions we would like addressed publicly today. And what's your story, Mr. Brown? You're an attorney. Isn't your role to advise the board of the pitfalls, pitfalls of what they're doing? Breaking federal law? Did you advise them that they were breaking federal law? Did they, or did they not listen to you? If you did not advise them on this, perhaps we need your resignation as well. It's my hope that the supervisors will be transparent and honest to disclose to the citizens of Pima County what has happened and what the correction, corrective action will be. Honesty is always the right way. However, I suspect no one here will take responsibility for what you did, and likely it'll be tied up in the courts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lox. Ms. Lorenson.
Good morning. My name is Susie Lorenson. Adalita, my condolences to you, as I have lost my father recently, and I also am a widow. My husband died in 2019 from COVID, and I wasn't able to visit him in the hospital. So I understand your heartbreak. And also, I was an oncology nurse, so I understand long-term. And I am so happy to see these nurses back here that are, you know, going to start their profession. It's a wonderful profession. Now I'd like to have some questions Tim mentioned for the county administrator. Number one, since the beginning of this asylum-seeking adventure, exactly how much money has Pima County dispersed to local NGOs to shelter, transport, feed, and provide other services? For example, medical care for what are referred as asylum seekers? The second question is, based on FEMA document you received, some $52 million is yet to be received by Pima County. Would it be correct to assume that $52 million has been dispersed to NGOs? Thirdly, if Pima County is in the hole, what is your plan to pay the taxpayers back monies dispersed to local NGOs should FEMA decide not to reimburse Pima County? Fourthly, how do you plan on justifying the monies given to NGOs considering the county supervisors have aided and abetted so-called asylum seekers? And lastly, the faculty on Drexel and Cali Santa Cruz is now empty. Pima paid a lot of money for that building. What are the plans for this facility? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lorenson. We'll hear from Ms. Requard here in a moment, but I wanted to announce that the final three speakers are Brendan Lyons, Corey Stevens, and Judge Sarah Mae Williams. Ms. Requard.
Thank you. Adalita, as someone who's also lost my father, yeah, my condolences. So you all, in order to be able to keep the 51 million that you received from the feds, you are being required to produce the names of those individual invaders, as well as the names of their sponsors? That'll be a neat trick. I hope that all of you will be held personally responsible to repay those funds, except you, Steve. Did any of you who voted for these federal grants ask why those people will be allowed to flow freely across our borders and allowed to assimilate having no sponsors? Resultantly, US citizen residents have had their food stamps reduced from 250 to a mere $14 per month. This is on you guys. Here are a couple of memes that are applicable here today. If any government official funnels tax dollars to child traffickers, they should be named, shamed, and left in a hole for life. I thought that was pretty good. Sounds good to me. Every 30 seconds, a child is sold into trafficking. Indeed, that is the real pandemic. Your child is more likely to be a victim of child self, sex trafficking tragically than they are to be harmed by COVID. That's a valid statistic. Well, here's another meme. The people who have sex with children are not Johns and Trix. Rather, they are child rapists and pedophiles, so we should call them what they are. And even SpongeBob SquarePants gets in the act. I love this one. I'll have you know that giving improvised parents food to tutor their children as a ruse to produce sadistic child abuse videos is considered child trafficking. From the mouths of kids cartoons. And the late Wilbur, Wilberforce said this, "The end of human trafficking starts with awareness. You may choose to look the other way, but you can never say again that you did not know." You've seen the evidence of the thousands of missing childrens, children. You've heard the statistics. It's all in your face. You can attest all you want that you did not know. Be ashamed. Be very, very ashamed. And own up to your behavior.
Thank you, Ms. Requard. Mr. Lyons.
Good morning Supervisor Gahalva. On behalf of Southern Arizona Home Builders Association, we offer our deepest and heartfelt condolences. Chair Scott, supervisors, and county staff. On behalf of the Southern Arizona Home Builders Association, we appreciate the Board's commitment to increasing housing supply and ensuring homes remain affordable for working families. We also deeply appreciate working with staff from the Department of Flood Plane Control District. While we support efforts to strengthen flood resilience, we urge you to consider how these policies, especially when combined with other active policy or fee initiatives, intersect with housing affordability. Even within the Flood Plane Management Plan, there's recognition of increased construction costs and their impact on affordable housing. However, these costs do not only affect government-supported housing, they also impact market rate housing, limiting options for working families. We encourage the Board to ensure that regulatory changes do not unintentionally restrict development or drive up home prices, making it harder for families to achieve homeownership. We look forward to continued collaboration to balance public safety with the need for attainable housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons. Ms. Stevens.
Hi, Jane. Wishing you would have taken that early retirement. Maybe you'll get your face on a bottle of 19 Crimes like Martha Stewart when it's all said and done. On behalf of Supervisor Christie and every legal taxpaying citizen who stood at this podium and warned you about how you were breaking the law, I say to you, we told you so. I hold in my hand evidence of the fraud that occurred at the border when people abandoned their identity entering through gaps in the border wall because they knew they did not qualify for asylum. This passport and the stamps that were in it would prove their pass-through country would have provided them protection and thus disqualify them for asylum. This discarded Mexican residency card, which is required for them to move north because it shows Mexico already granted them protection, which is another disqualifier for asylum. These individuals illegally entered the country, sought fraudulent asylum. sought fraudulent asylum, and in turn were granted process through the NGO system here in Pima County. The Dems on this board then sent them off to another state to become an economic burden on that economy. This is illegal immigration. This is encouraging or inducing an alien to come. I have video footage of illegals from the border going to the Catholic Charities Processing Center in the Wadfed Building in Nogales, onto the buses, all the way to the welcome centers right here in Pima County. And I can't wait to send my response within 30 days. Also, have fun with the special condition that requires you and the executive officers of any subrecipient or contractor that receives funding under the award to sign an affidavit attesting that you have not committed or participated in any crime. So that would include Catholic community charities, Jop Properties, Red Roof Inn, Triple A Cab, Sun Tran, Comfort Inn and Suites, and the city of Tucson, just to name a few. Last I heard, Bishop Wiesenberger high-tailed it out of here. Welcome Centers all shut down. Hotels aren't operational. So what? It's 600,000 illegals you must track down? Good luck. You've been dogged.
Ms. Stevens. Our final speaker is Judge Sarah May Williams from Aho Justice Court. Judge Williams.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors, County Administrator, and Adalita. My most heartfelt condolences to you and your family. So I'm here today to respectfully request to hold or to table any decision regarding any pro-tem appointments today. As Presiding Judge of Aho and the newly-elected Presiding Judge of Consolidated Court of Pima County, I did not request for the appointment of Maria Felix to serve as any pro-tem, nor were any of the elected justices of the peace notified of this request made by Judge Luskey. On the supporting documentation, it states that the Presiding Judge of Pima County Justice Court, which would be me, was CC'd on this administrative order, but this morning is the first time I have seen this document. So tabling this item would give me the time to have discussion on this request as Presiding Judge of Aho. Like you all, elected justices of the peace have a fiduciary duty. We are all held accountable and want transparency and a standard for our constituents. At this time, we have a slate of pro-tem's and a cooperative bench who step up and provide coverage for a fellow colleague as needed. To reduce the use of pro-tem's and to avoid increasing the pro-tem budget, some elected justices of the peace have a buddy judge who help provide coverage in the event of a medical emergency. I respectfully request to table any pro-tem appointments at this time. Two years ago, the bench and a committee recruited and vetted over 10 pro-tem's. By statute, this board are the only officials who have the authority to officially appoint a pro-tem. So it is important for the elected justices of the peace to have input on such appointments like pro-tem's since they provide coverage to court caseloads. So that's my request today. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge Williams. Judge Williams, being our final speaker, I will now close call to the public and ask my colleagues if they would like to ask county administration to follow up on any matters or respond to a criticism. Hearing none, we will go back to the regular agenda. And we have a time certain item for 10 o'clock. And that is presentation from Judge Danielle Luskey regarding appointment of public non-attorney members to the Pima County Commission on Trial Court Appointments, which are made by the Individual District Trial Court Appointment Nominating Committee. Judge Luskey, thanks so much for being here this morning.
Thank you for having me. And good morning to all you supervisors. I appreciate you giving me some time. As you know, in October, I think I sent a note because I was concerned. I re-looked at the list. There are 10 community members on the Pima County Trial Court Commission. All 10 are past due dates. Nobody is serving. You can continue to serve past your expiration date or expire date with your time on the commission. And there are four people who are doing that. When I applied for the judicial position in 2011, what was emphasized to me was when you interview, you are not interviewing with a bunch of lawyers and judges as you might expect you are. You are interviewing primarily with public members because the public members far outweighed the lawyers on that commission. Five lawyers and 10 public members. It was emphasized to me how important it was to show you were a member of the public, that the public was important, that being a judge was a part of the public. I really think that by losing public members, our trial court commission is losing the voice it needs to have. And so I'm just trying to emphasize the importance of why I think we need these public members to be appointed. I know Ms. Lesher sent out some information with regard to the committees and the way that it works, and that could be resent out if you would like. There is a provision, this is all through the Constitution. Article 6 is how the procedures work. And then there is a statute, ARS 12131, that allows the governor to appoint parties' individuals out of each district if the board does not. I personally think the board should be the one choosing those people. You are closer to the public. No offense to our governor, but how many people can she know in Tucson and relate to in each individual district? And I think it's important that individuals in this community have a say in who our judges are. The other reason this is important is I've done the math. And in the next five years, I think we will lose half of the Pima County bench. They will retire. Currently, we have Judge Marner is about to leave the bench because he's going to take a job on the federal bench. Judge Hockley will retire in July. And those are the ones I just know this year. We have just recently replaced Judge Lee. We have just recently replaced two other judges in the last four months. So public information is very important. And I just wanted to address that. I'm also available to address, if you would like, some of the comments made by Judge Williams. I see that differently than she does, but I will leave that up to you because obviously that's not why I was on the agenda. But I wanted to make myself available if you had any questions on that, Esau.
Any questions on the topic for the Judge? Supervisor Grahaville and Supervisor Christie.
Thank you. If you could just remind the public, so there's the commission, a 16-member commission. Each supervisory district has two. Can you remind us the political, like their affiliation makeup? And so I think historically, that's been one of the issues that we've run into.
And so anybody, each district has two nominees or two members. They cannot be of the same party. So you can't have two Republicans, two Democrats, or two independents representing District 1, for example. You have to have a mix of some kind. But as long as they're not from the same party, you have two from each district. And I think that's important because, again, that makes for 16 people. And also, honestly, when you have a full commission of public members, they far outweigh the lawyers. There are five lawyers, one from each district as well. Those are handled through the state bar, and I'm pushing the state bar to get their positions filled as well.
And does it have to be the combination? Can it be a Democrat, independent, Green? Like, are they, what is the party affiliation?
To my understanding and reading it, they just cannot be from the same party. So as long as they are independent, Democrat, Democrat Republic, different party, Republican, anything like that can work, as long as they're both not the same in the Indian district. The lawyers also have to be a mix. So there's five. They can't all be Republicans or all be Democrats or all be independents. They have to have a mixture so there's not one of that as well.
Thank you. Supervisor Christie.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And along with what Supervisor Grahaville was questioning you about, what are the residency requirements? Do they have to be from the supervisor's district? Live in that district?
They do have to live in your district, and they have to have lived in that district for one year. And I believe they have to have lived within Pima County or Arizona for five years. But they have to live within your district for a year.
And how long is their term?
That varies. There are different terms for different ones. So I'm a little reluctant to say. There are some that are two, some that are three, some that are four. So there's a different varying district or term on that.
And briefly, and I know you alluded to it earlier, but just could you give us the thumbnail sketch of what their duties would be?
So what their duties are is any time there is a judicial opening, there's obviously an advertisement, and there's a bear of an application that you fill out if you're applying for the judicial application. All of the members of the Trial Court Commission get those applications. They review those. They talk in a group about who to interview. And they take select people, sometimes not to be interviewed. And then of the people that are interviewed, then obviously they interview them, and they also do background checks. So I don't know if any of you have ever been on a list for a judge, but they pretty much call everybody that's on the list. They also contact all the judges in Pima County usually, or Superior Court, and ask for any opinions on that as well. So they do a background and participate in the interview. After that, they have to send up names to the governor, no more than three, or excuse me, no less than three. It can be more than three. And again, a mix of parties.
And Mr. Chair, what, at this particular point, we don't know because of the variance of the length of their term. Is there a possibility? Because there's a lot of issues that you've outlined about their membership and their appointment. Could you provide the board with, or someone in the administration, provide the board members with the breakdown of what you just gave us?
Sure.
And also, Mr. Chair, who oversees them? And who arranges and organizes the whole process?
There's a Chief Justice that, or the Chief Justice is technically on every Trial Court Commission, but she normally, whoever is in that position, has normally dedicated it to someone. So in this case, it's Justice Bean from the Arizona Supreme Court. He's the liaison with the Pima County Trial Desk. So he runs the meetings and organizing.
And Mr. Chair, so he sits with the meetings? He oversees it?
Correct.
He makes rulings on whether or not their germane questions are being asked and proper?
I've never been in the back door part of that, but I would assume so if there was something that he thought could not be asked or done, he would be the one who would direct that.
And does he call the meetings and organize everything?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Supervisor Heinz, any questions or comments? Go ahead, please, sir.
Yes, thank you. I remember looking into this exact issue with my team when a lot of us, you know, were just sworn in in 2021. Could we just review the process by which our offices are supposed to make these nominations or appointments to the 16-member panel? Because as I recall, I think we had to empanel a small commission of five or more people from District 2, for example, to then screen candidates and then put them forth. So it's not, I don't think it's as simple. And if it is, I'll do it as soon as we can make it happen.
He's correct.
But I recall it's a fairly convoluted and complex process. And I would just like to have some clarification for myself and my team and for my colleagues.
I apologize.
Supervisor Heinz, I'm sorry, Judge. Supervisor Heinz, Ms. Lesher asked if she could respond to your inquiry, and then I'll call on the judge as well. Ms. Lesher.
Chair Scott, just indicating, we have sent a memo out that we will send again that explains the nominating process. Yes, each board has to create a nominating committee from which these other individuals are appointed. So we'll get that right out so that the board can see exactly how they can move forward with this request.
Thank you, ma'am.
And that was what?
Anything you want to add?
Just that, that was what I was going to say. I apologize. It isn't that simple as you all just pick a person. You do have a committee that does that. But I'm just hopeful that we have a full commission or at least more people participating so that the public's really well represented with the judiciary as well.
All right. Any other questions or comments on this item? If not, with the board's indulgence, I'm going to move to item number 12 approval. And Judge, if you could stay up.
Oh, sorry.
Approval of the consent calendar because you indicated a desire to address some of the concerns that were raised by Judge Williams. And the item that she was speaking to is on the consent calendar. So I will move the consent calendar. I will move it in its entirety for now, yes.
For discussion.
Yes, for discussion.
I'll second.
Thank you, Supervisor. All right. And Judge Luskey, if you could share with the board some of the comments that you wanted to pass on to us with regard to that pro-tem appointment, which for my colleagues is consent agenda item number five.
At Pima County Consolidated Justice Court, as you know, there are judges that are consolidated into that court. And there is a need for pro-tem's in every court. In Aho and in Green Valley, they can suggest names to me, then I suggest them to you to be put on for pro-tem's. And this usually occurs in the summer. You'll get a bunch of those along with Superior Court's list of pro-tem's. With Pima County Consolidated Justice Court, because it's a little bit different. In previous years, they did have a panel, a group that reviewed. I'm trying to simplify that and also follow the statutes. What the statutes say is that I nominate, and then you all can solidify who the pro-tem is. With regard specifically to Judge Felix, she has, is on the pro-tem list on a limited basis. I believe Animal Welfare Court and Arraignments. We had a concern in that we had one justice of the peace out on a serious medical issue, one out due to the death of a family member, and then one going on a two-week pre-planned out-of-country vacation. So that was three justices of the peace gone at once. Judge Felix has previously been a justice of the peace. And so I sent around a message. Our policy now with regard to pro-tem's is any time there is a question with regard to somebody becoming a pro-tem, and this will all usually occur at one time. This was sort of a unique circumstance, given our shortage of judges. But I will send around, for example, somebody has applied. Here is their application. All the judges are aware of Judge Felix. So in Judge Felix's case, I solicited information. I did have some concerns from two of the justices of the peace with regard to Judge Felix and how she handles calendars. I also had all the other justices of the peace, along with Ron Newman, who serves as a pro-tem, full-time justice of the peace, praise Judge Felix and the work that she did. So the majority was that she was very fit and would be great to have as an addition. Additionally, she was supported by administration. So that is the reason why we put her on the list, to have her be able to serve full-time so that we could, one, deal with these sort of emergency losses that we had.
Pardon me for interrupting. When you say "supported by administration"?
The Pima County, sorry, Consolidated Justice Court.
All right, thank you.
I apologize. And so that's why we put her on the list. But I did solicit information and feedback from all of the judges at Pima County Consolidated Justice Court because those are the judges where she would serve. Additionally, under our current policy, if someone is on the pro-tem list, anybody, not just Judge Felix, and an individual justice of the peace does not care to have that person sit on their calendar, they can reject that individual from sitting on their calendar. So it doesn't prohibit them from saying, I personally, for whatever reason, don't work well, don't like, whatever the reason could be. They can say, that person cannot sit on my calendar. They do still have that control. But they would then just be listed as a pro-tem as long as, of course, approved through the process. I did not want her serving on anything without having her, anything additional than what she's already approved for, without bringing her forward. And that's why we had her put on this agenda.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from board members? All right, well, the consent agenda was approved and seconded. I will call the question.
No, it was, excuse me. It was moved and seconded for discussion. So if we want to go ahead and move it.
Oh, I'm sorry. So we need to make a second motion to just approve it?
Just because we specifically said that we were just talking.
Okay, all right. Thank you. So I will move the consent agenda as listed.
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, item passes 4-1 with Supervisor Heinz in opposition. Judge Luskey, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
And thank you, Supervisor Grahaville. I'm still trying to learn this chair thing.
I was happy that Judge Luskey said, yeah, you're right. I'm like, yay! I'm so glad.
All right. We're going to move back to the regular agenda. We do have executive session items, but because the county attorney is going to join us for executive session, we have a time certain of noon. So we're going to move now to item number nine, which is Flood Plane Management Plan Update. We do have some slides, so I will turn it over to Ms. Lesher to introduce the item.
Thank you very much, Chair Scott. Yes, we are looking at approval before you today as for our Flood Plane Management Plan. We have been working, I believe, since April of '24 to develop this program and talking with the community. Appreciate Mr. Lyons's comments. I believe you've received information and feedback from both Saba and MPA, who I know have been working with the Department have been working with the department over this last almost year to ensure that we are representing all of the community. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Shep, the Director of the Flood Control District, who will give you a little more detail on the plan.
Thank you, Ms. Lesher. Mr. Shep?
Chair Scott, members of the board, thank you very much. I'm just going to set up Dr. Sax. Dr. Sax managed the development of the floodplain management plan, but I just wanted to give a little introduction to emphasize the importance of the, of the adoption of the 2020 plan to the Flood Control District. The, not only did FEMA smile upon us and change our CRS classification from Class V to Class II, the value that we really received from the development of that plan was related to stakeholder engagement. Dr. Sax led the charge on engaging neighbors over the span of a year. We learned a lot where our gaps in knowledge were, where some problems are, where we could do better outreach, and those crystallize into an action plan that has been very useful to us for the last five years. He, Dr. Sax has done it again. He has engaged over the last year, a planning committee, I'm on the planning committee, Brendan Lyons is on the planning committee, as well as numerous neighborhood associations to once again dig into where our problems are, et cetera. And the plan that you have in front of you includes an action plan, which again is the crystallization of some of the gaps that were identified during this long process. Greg will talk about that in his few slides. Some of the actions are outreach-related, some of them are recommendations for new rulemaking, some of them are for projects. Please note that the adoption of this plan does not, is not rulemaking, and it's not our capital program. They follow their own processes, but this is a beacon on the hill for us over the next five years so that we can listen to the folks who participated in this process. And I'm going to turn it over to our environmental planner, Greg Sax, to kind of go through the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shep. Dr. Sax?
Thank you, Director Shep, Chairman of the Board, members of the board and the public and staff who are here, thank you for giving me this time to describe to you a little bit about what the plan is. As Director Shep indicated, the board originally approved a floodplain management plan in April of 2020. Like many other plans, it has a five-year life cycle, so we're seeking approval prior to April of 2025. It is a plan for our activities, the regional flood control district activities, to take place during the years 2025 to 2020-30. It is also meets the state, actually, let's go to slide one, please. It also meets the state statutory requirement for a report of our activities over the last five years. So basically, it's a written document of some 1,000 pages describing everything we've done for the last five years and what we hope the board will direct us to do over the next five years. It follows FEMA's guidance on the National Flood Insurance Program as described in the Coordinator's Manual shown on the screen there. For those who, you know, probably most people aren't familiar with the National Flood Insurance Program, which establishes minimum standards, the CRS, the Community Rating System, rates each community for how it exceeds those minimum standards and then provides flood insurance rate discounts to the insured within those communities. Pima County is in the top 0.3% in the United States, so anyone buying flood insurance in the county gets a 40% discount. This plan was a large part of that, as well as our work with the Office of Emergency Management. What the first slide is showing is just the webpage that is available, where the draft plan is, the draft action plan, progress reports on the previous plan, and the letters that we've received to date. That webpage, let's go to the second slide, the Coordinator's Manual, it's really a process-oriented plan. As Director Shep pointed out, it does not establish policy. FEMA doesn't really care what the recommendations of the plan are, they care what the process is, and the process is led by this planning committee, which was established by resolution of the board in 2019. It is an open and public committee, so even today, we were getting new members who would like to participate during implementation. The list on the left there is, you know, not all of those groups were active up to last week. Those are people who've been involved over the five years that the plan has been in place. The committee schedule on the right talks about what, what we have done, and you know, back in April of 2024, we provided the public and the board with a progress report on what we have done, and then the committee began to evaluate what we, where the gaps are. So then they identify new information, including the studies provided by Saba about the costs on affordability, and information on future climate conditions provided by various environmental organizations. So then we establish a new set of goals, and this year, I have a slide later of what the new goals identified were. The existing goals are those contained in our ordinance and those added in 2020. Then it says problems there, but you know, we also talk about opportunities and challenges, FEMA likes the word problems, but then we identify a list of problems. That also comes from a survey, which we send to all 30-some thousand floodplain residents in Pima County and those living behind levees in all the jurisdictions, since there are responsibility. So we get a very large problem list and then, or you know, opportunities and challenges. Then we create an action plan, and we publish the draft plan, the full plan narrative document, including action plan in December, sought public comment until February 1st, and then finalize the plan, what you now have as the proposed plan. Just to reiterate, we send this mailer every summer to floodplain residents and have a survey for the initial input. We conduct public meetings in addition to the six committee meetings. We report monthly to the Flood Control District Advisory Committee, who are your appointees on this process as well. We conducted public meetings in, with the Cat Foothills Association, the Green Valley Council, the Southeast Area Council, the Tucson Mountains Association, and the Planning and Zoning Commission. Next slide, please. The new goals identified by the planning committee for the next five years are increased beneficial use of stormwater, including regional recharge and urban green spaces, ensure equitable access to flood mitigation services, and prioritize neighborhood-scale beneficial use of stormwater projects in vulnerable and underserved areas. Next slide, please. This is just to give you an idea that it all starts with a hazard assessment. We look at any new emerging problems that have occurred, we present that information to the committee, and then they help us come up with ways to mitigate those problems and opportunities. There's a list there on the left, which I won't try to read. We also do analytic information, such as the example map, there is a building density heat map in the floodplain, so we look at how many buildings are in the floodplain in each of the 28 watersheds in Pima County, and we look at where the flood insurance claims are. We also look at complaints permitting, hazard mapping, et cetera. Next slide, please. Then the committee is engaged in coming up with a list of mitigation actions to address those problems and opportunities. There's 61 programs and 108 discrete projects. So an example of a program is capital improvements, and then of course, there's 27 some individual capital improvement projects listed, which are also in the long-term infrastructure plan that the county works on. So those are just a couple examples, I don't really expect people to be able to read that, but like Director Shep said, the real crux of the plan is the action plan that lists the discrete activities that we will do over the next five years, and we seek the board's approval of that plan. And I'm available to answer any questions you might have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Sax. Supervisor Christie?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Sax, I, a couple, couple procedural questions, but first, you listed the organizations that you presented the plan to, and you're reaching out to the community. I noticed you did not include the Tanka Verde Valley Association.
No, we, we sought invitations, and those are the organizations that invite us. We tried to get a geographic spread, but no, we did not.
And did they respond, or?
No, we, we do a mailer to all the HOAs on a list provided by Development Services that is the same HOA and Neighborhood Association list they use for notifications for Planning and Zoning Commission hearings, and then we, you know, kind of reached out, I know I reached out to your organization, try, you know, trying hard to get audience at the Southeast Area Council, but you know, we, we kind of go where we're invited.
Well, as, Mr. Chair, we do know, you know, they are in a vulnerable plane out there, and I'm hoping at some point that perhaps they can be revisited to, to participate in that, because I think their, their position is, is noteworthy.
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Christie, yes, we'd be happy to, to work with them. The nice thing about this plan is even though we're going to seek your adoption of a five-year plan, we do update the plan annually, and if there are other problems, it's a living document, so we're, if there are other issues identified, we can incorporate that in.
Great, if we can help for your reaching out to them, we'd be glad to. Mr. Chair, two quick questions, and I, this'll hearken back to my discussions with Mr. De Bonis on the Finger Rock properties and the flood issues there. How does, how does, well, for instance, there's a nursery that's been advertising, and I think quite intelligently, about some floodplain issues on their property, and they have to, have to have some buildings demolished and all of their inventory needs to be moved, so they're going to have a big sale. And I think we know who that, that probably is, but they're going to have to demolish these buildings. In the Finger Rocks issue, there's that program that actually purchases the property from the owner. How does this work with, with vulnerable buildings such as the nursery? Are they reimbursed for their expenses in, in this project, or how does that work, and how does it differ from the Finger Rock issue?
Chair Scott, Supervisor Christie, good questions. So related to the nursery, the nursery made improvements without building permits or floodplain use permits for changes of, of use of those. Those new structures were built without permits, and some structures changed the use that were no longer compatible with floodplain management regulations. And when working with them, the nursery had some options about returning the use of some of those and chose this path so as to increase the square foot of retail space. Retail space has a different floodplain standard than a storage space, so we were working with them over a period of time, and then they chose the, the option that they're pursuing with respect to the Finger Rock structures.
I'm sorry, could you tell me what the option is they're pursuing for reimbursement, or?
It is, it is their demolition of the structures at their cost and a, a construction of a new retail structure that is compliant with floodplain management regulations. Yes.
Because they didn't include in their advertisements that they were not in compliance with the building, but anyway.
May not be good advertisement. With respect to the Finger Rock structures, this type of process, you know, identifies problems or, and looks for mitigation opportunities, and there are different scenarios that allow for different mitigation opportunities. If we can build bank protection to protect flood-prone structures, the 49ers subdivision has been flooded a few times, and a levy has been proposed and rejected by the 49ers subdivision. In the case of the Finger Rock wash, based on the location of the structures relative to the wash and its proximity to the wilderness area, there wasn't much in the way of, of other mitigation that could happen. There wasn't things we could do upstream, and the best mitigation for, for those was the removal of the structures. They were just in a really bad spot, and it happened in the 60s.
But they were purchased.
They were purchased by the Flood Control District, and then there's, most recently, some grant funds were received for acquisition of two other ones.
Okay, and Mr. Chair, I'm wondering if I could ask your permission and indulgence, Mr. Lyons from the Southern Arizona Home Builders Association is here, and he submitted a letter regarding this whole plan. Would it be possible that I could ask him some questions on it?
I, I don't have a problem with that.
Can you come up Brendan?
We received this conveyance from the Southern Arizona Home Builders Association, and you had, were one of the stakeholders, the SAA, Southern Arizona Home Builders Association, and in your letter, you outline one, two, three, six issues that are concerning to the Southern Arizona Home Builders Association. I guess my question to you is, is A, could you just briefly expand on why you are concerned about these issues, why they are a concern to your organization? And secondly, given that they exist, would you feel that it would be, it would necessitate, before this issue is adjudicated upon, that Mr. Shep's department addressed these to the satisfaction of all the stakeholders, including Southern Arizona Home Builders? Or how, how would you like to see this proceed, and how would your association like to see it proceed?
Chair Scott, Supervisor Christie, thank you very much. Yes, we have been engaged as stakeholders as part of these processes. This past year has been my first year with Saba, Southern Arizona Home Builders Association. Some of these meetings that I've been participating have been extremely technical in nature, so I'm trying to learn as much as I possibly can. In addition to participating, we're also doing our own member outreach, and it has been brought to our attention in recent weeks why these issues have been addressed to you at, at the ninth hour. Needless to say, throughout this entire process, we've conveyed to the district our concerns regarding the, the impacts on infrastructure costs, as well as the availability of limited land that poses. There has been concerns around statute as well, and we would like to continue to work with the district. The district has been great to work with, staff has been remarkable. Needless to say, concerns remain, and you know, it's, it's up to the purview of the board if, if there's an extension or further.
So, Mr. Chair, so at this particular point, your organization-
We are not standing in opposition at this time, but there are concerns that linger.
And Mr. Shep, would you like here to address those, or the, the condition of the concerns?
Chair Scott, Supervisor Christie, yes, thank you very much. We have been engaged with stakeholders regarding rulemaking, and we do believe that it is important that, you know, we fully flesh out certain aspects where there are new standards, et cetera. The floodplain management plan is a much larger document, and it does not create new rules, and it does not establish a capital program, and we are absolutely willing to continue the conversation with, with Saba Metropolitan Pima Alliance, et cetera, regarding any potential new rulemaking, and we absolutely understand the impact that that may have, and you know, hopefully, Mr. Lyons will, will agree that we've been engaged with some of him for, you know, on the better part of a year, making sure that when we do this, we do this correctly. The floodplain management plan is more of an umbrella, and it does a whole bunch of things related to outreach, floodplain management strategy generally, and it doesn't create rules. And when we go down that process, you will have the opportunity to see it again as a board, and it will have that stakeholder engagement.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair, I have no doubt that you will continue your outreach on this issue with the Southern Arizona Home Builders Association and other stakeholders. You've been remarkably well attuned to that in the past, and I know you are now in the present with this issue, so thank you, Mr. Lyons, appreciate your letter and, and your participation. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you Supervisor Christie. Any other questions or comments? Supervisor Allen?
So I, I just wanted to say thank you for, for a great plan. As you know, I think when my staff sat down with you and your team, we could have spent hours there. So I, I think some of the things that we really appreciate, the, the focus within this plan, is the, the increased use and attention towards stormwater collection, both for, for recharge purposes, but as well as for creating urban green spaces, as well as looking at the, the neighborhood level and, and ways in which we can kind of invest in stormwater projects at that real kind of micro-level scale, as well as the focus within the Altar Valley and the Tucson Mountains, and digging into watershed restoration in both of those places. So happy to see that focus, and thank you for your work.
Chair Scott, Supervisor Allen, thank you very much.
Thank you Supervisor Allen. Supervisor Hines, any questions? Thank you Supervisor Allen. Supervisor Heinz, any questions or comments? Okay, all right. I had a couple of questions, unless Supervisor Gray Hall, but you had any?
No.
Okay. If we go to the discussion section on the agenda item report, my first question follows up using language from that section on the question that Supervisor Christie posed. There's a sentence near the end that says, "This plan also does not contain any new regulations. It provides direction on new policies to consider, which will follow their own process." Now, Dr. Sacks touched on this process a bit during his presentation. Supervisor Christie and Mr. Lyons made reference to them in their comments. But could you get into a little bit more detail, Mr. Shep, on that process that is referenced in this discussion section?
Chair Scott, members of the board, yes. Thank you for that question. There's a statutory process for rulemaking. It requires that we put proposed rules on our website and engage stakeholders for a period of 30 days and solicit input, and then report any comments and any changes prior to placement on the board agenda. But that is the minimum, once again. And what we like to do is, in anticipation of the formal rulemaking process, we engage the stakeholders informally beforehand so that we can hash out the technical issues. And floodplain management has lots of technical issues beforehand, so that when we do start the formal process, that it is a smoother process for everybody. And in fact, the process that we've been engaged with related to hydrology associated with future climate conditions is still in the informal process, where we're engaging stakeholders such that we will have some level of agreement before we start the formal process.
So the formal process is defined in statute, but the district has historically engaged in, as you described them, informal outreach with our stakeholders?
Correct.
Okay. So another question that stems from the language in that discussion section is, in the last sentence, says, "The plan includes a watershed master plan, including each of the 28 watersheds impacting unincorporated Pima County that identify flood hazard exposure problem areas." I'm just curious with regard, and I know part of the answer to this question, but for the public and media's benefit, with regard to watersheds and within incorporated areas of the county, cities and towns, can you outline what the district does working with cities and towns on their own watershed master plans?
Chair Scott, yes, thank you for that question. I'll start with the statute, just to kind of give the framework. The Flood Control District is the floodplain manager for all of Pima County. Jurisdictions, unilaterally on their own, can adopt floodplain management regulations and take over their own floodplain management functions within their jurisdictions. And all of the jurisdictions have done that. But there are many other authorities that the Flood Control District has, including the construction of capital improvements. We happen to also provide technical guidance to the jurisdictions. We do floodplain mapping services. But, for example, with the city of Tucson, they have their own floodplain management plan. And so we don't, you know, usurp their floodplain management plan with our own floodplain management plan. So we do work hand in glove. As a matter of fact, the goal from the 2020 floodplain management plan is to engage jurisdictions to a greater degree, such that we're being helpful and we have uniform adoption of standards. And so aspirationally, we are still trying to do that. But for purposes of some of our problem assessments, et cetera, there is a little bit more focus on the unincorporated Pima County, because from the floodplain management perspective, that's our purview, while the other jurisdictions remain floodplain managers of their own jurisdictions.
So besides the city of Tucson, the three towns in the city of Tucson, South Tucson, also have their own floodplain management plans?
So the city of Tucson has a floodplain management plan, and the other ones I don't think have floodplain management plans. And they are in various, you know, stages of their community rating system. Some don't participate at all. But we engage them through separate means and through our floodplain, for our Flood Control District Advisory Committee, all of the floodplain administrators sit on our advisory committee. And so they've had an opportunity for input here, and they've endorsed the floodplain management plan as well. And we engage them on services they might need, since we're a regional entity.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that, and want to also commend your entire department, especially Dr. Sacks, for his leadership in this realm. And with that, lest there are any further comments or questions, I will move item number nine.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Item passes 5-0. Thank you very much. Okay, we will now move to item number 10, to contract with the city of Tucson to provide an intergovernmental agreement for design, construction, and maintenance of the Rita Ranch Detention Basin. I'll move the item.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
I have just some questions on the whole intergovernmental agreement. As we know, the city of Tucson has had some issues with the county as far as differential water rates. So I'm a little bit skeptical or shy about making intergovernmental agreements with the city of Tucson Water. But nonetheless, I have a couple, three questions that I'll convey them, and then whoever you designate could respond. First of all, what value does the city of Tucson add to this IGA? This is a county project. It's a county regulated enterprise. I don't understand why the city of Tucson is involved in this IGA when Pima County could pretty much do all of the items that they are stating in the background that the city of Tucson would want to do. For instance, it states that the city of Tucson would now have access to various reading levels of quality of the water. I would think that our wastewater department could easily produce those issues and provide them periodically to the city of Tucson. But the city of Tucson doesn't need access to those items. And those periodic reports could be forwarded with the findings to the city of Tucson. And it just seems to me that our wastewater department could be doing the city of Tucson's role here. And I just, I'm trying to decipher what is the fact that this is an IGA with the city of Tucson, and what involvement and value does the city of Tucson have in it?
Administrator Lesh.
Chair Scott and Supervisor Christie, and I'll ask Mr. Shep to address this. But as you want to remind you, it is a no-cost IGA that the Flood Control District built a couple of infiltration trenches in late '24. This allows access to the property for the city of Tucson and Tucson Water to look at groundwater levels and quality. And I think it simply to allow Tucson Water to look at the Tucson Water components.
And again, Mr. Chair and County Administrator Lesh, we could provide that information. They don't need access to do it, I would think.
Chair Scott Supervisor Christie, I thank you for the question. I think that we are very well situated to do projects like this. We own a lot of drainage infrastructure. Stormwater flows through them, and we can retrofit some of our infrastructure to enhance recharge. But the city of Tucson does bring value here, notwithstanding the differential water rates issue. Does bring value in that they have a series of wells that they can monitor, that we don't have access to. They have a better understanding of the underground geology, such that if we are going to prioritize and optimize where we do recharge, we don't want to do it in a location where it might not work very well, because there is a layer underground that we don't know about. And so we will share information that way. They, this IGA gives them access so that they can figure out the effectiveness of our recharge. You know, we're happy in a very low-tech way of trying to get water that would otherwise flow to Pinal County and keep it here and keep it in our basin. But they're going to try to measure it more precisely, which is something that is fine with us. They are also worried potentially about water quality issues, such that if we start recharging very effectively, we might take water underground that might be drinkable water and add pollutants from the surface. And so they're interested there, too. They're the designated water provider. We're not a water provider. So I think that there is a relationship that could be had there that's mutually beneficial, notwithstanding the lawsuit.
Mr. Chair, thank you, Mr. Shep. I just, very infrequently, I don't find that there is any such thing as no cost when we're dealing with the city of Tucson. So that's what's prompted my question. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Christie. Any other questions or comments from board members? All right, item was moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes 5-0.
Chair Scott?
Yes, Supervisor Christie.
We have Dr.
Supervisor Gray.
That's okay. We have Dr. Cullen here, and I'm wondering if we could jump to the health item?
Absolutely. Absolutely. And that is?
Remind me what number it is.
It's addendum item number eight. Yes, thank you. And we, okay, thank you, Ms. Manriquez. So we're going back to sitting as the Board of Supervisors. We were sitting as the Flood Control Board. So we're on addendum item number eight. This is an item that was added to the addendum by Supervisor Heinz. So before I turn it over to Administrator Lesh and Dr. Cullen, just wanted to see if Supervisor Heinz had any introductory comments.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Scott. So as we've seen, measles unfortunately has become a bit of a resurgent situation. It, for a little bit of context, I have been a practicing hospital physician for nearly two decades. I have never seen or treated a case of measles. And that's because of just widespread universal vaccination, MMR, polio, and those other things that we get when we're kids. And the reason I put this item on and asked Dr. Cullen to come and speak to us a bit about it is frankly because this is terrifying. Measles, we went through a pandemic with COVID. I mean, COVID, and I watched it like kill dozens of people right in front of me and right in front of the nurses I work with. COVID is laughable compared to measles. Measles is a terrifying potential viral epidemic, and it is incredibly, incredibly contagious, far more contagious than COVID. So, and we learned about it in medical school, and we're told, you're not going to see this because we've kind of vaccinated it out of existence. But here's what it looks like. So now that we're seeing measles outbreaks in a dozen states, and we've seen two children, I believe it's two children now, that have died as a result of measles in the state of Texas, I'm sad to say there will likely be more because this is a very nasty virus. And our herd immunity number needs to be right about at 95%. And we're falling below that. I recently looked at the numbers statewide, and we're, starting back in 2016, I think it was, the average for matriculating kindergarteners, which is how they measure this, into our public school system fell just below 95%, which is concerning, and has fallen every year since then with a precipitous drop, starting in 2020, coincident with the pandemic, of course. So here in Pima County, we are doing a bit better than statewide. The average for matriculating kindergarteners in terms of their measles vaccination status is 93.7%. So, but that's still not okay. And we can do better. And this represents a very serious, urgent public health crisis. And because frankly, I need an update. It's been over two decades since I've done a heck of a lot of research or heard or learned about measles, what it does, how it spreads, how well it spreads. I think it's important to hear from Dr. Cullen, a public health expert, about measles. And she's going to teach us all a bit about this very serious illness. And then I'd like to discuss a bit after her presentation, what I'm hoping we can do as a board to help mitigate this. And Dr. Cullen?
Thank you, Doctor. Thank you Supervisor Heinz. Administrator Lesh, any introductory comments, or should we turn it over to Dr. Cullen?
Simply thank you, Chair Scott. The request to staff today was to address and to communicate with the public about the growing health concern of measles, mumps, and rubella, and then to perhaps look at some of the vaccination requirements, education, and some of the data monitoring. So with that, we will turn it over to Dr. Cullen for the update. Thank you.
Chair Scott, Board of Supervisors, Ms. Lesh, thank you for the opportunity to present. I do have a slide deck that we're going to go through. Next slide, please. Before we go into the cases and outbreaks, I want to respond to something Dr. Heinz, Supervisor Heinz, talked about. It is true that the vast majority of providers in this country have never seen a case of measles, with huge chagrin for all of the healthcare providers. We are now starting to see that. So what we know is that recognition of measles is important. We have been doing a lot of work at the Health Department with our healthcare providers in the county. As you may or may not recall, we did set up a web-based system called Provider Hub, where we push out information specifically to providers that have signed up for that listserv. In the past month, we have pushed out specifically information about measles, how it presents, what to look for. The most important thing is that there is an incubation period for measles, where people may or may not have any symptoms. And that is the period that we are most concerned about. If you will recall, there's a concept called RNOT. That's the number of people that get infected for one case. The belief is that when measles is in a room, it usually will last for at least two to three hours after someone in the room has had measles. And the expectation is that up to 90% of people that have been exposed will then develop the disease if they do not have immunity to it. So this is an update of what we're seeing in the U.S. right now. This is for, through March 14. I actually do have updated data on that. As of today, there have been 279 cases in Texas and 38 in New Mexico. So that 301 confirmed measles cases that were from March 14th is now 317 across the U.S. 93% of the cases, as you see here, have been linked to the three outbreaks you're probably most familiar from what's in the public eye of what is happening in Texas, and then the spread into New Mexico. At the current time, you can see that measles typically kills one to three out of every thousand cases. So the belief is that there is significant underreporting of measles at the current time, given that there have been two deaths. Prior to this current U.S. outbreak, the last death due to measles was in 2015. Next slide. So to give you a local measles update, local meaning Arizona in this state, there are currently no reported cases of measles in Pima County. And I will finish up this presentation talking about what we are doing to prepare to ensure that we will be able to respond. The last reported case was in 2019. It was an unvaccinated returning international traveler. At that point, there were no known transmission. Much of that was due to a rapid response that occurred at that time with our epidemiology team, where we were, once again, investigated the case and looked for the contacts, ensured that the contacts had appropriate vaccination and/or isolation. There's been no reported measles cases in Arizona in 2025. But you may recall, there were cases last year. And you may recall, some of those cases occurred in Maricopa County, where they initiated what we would call the EOC, an Emergency Operations Center, familiar to us from COVID, to ensure that they could activate their epidemiology and their clinical team in time. Next slide. The best way to protect against measles is vaccination. Community protection requires a vaccination rate of 95%. That is what Dr. Heinz was alluding to when he talked about the lower rate of 93.8% in kindergarten. I will tell you that depending upon what your source of data is, you will see variation in these rates. Sometimes people report 92.7, sometimes they will report 94.8. I just want you to be aware, depending upon the source, you may see some differences. The differences are minor. However, they, what we are seeing is a consistent rate below 95% in the kindergarten time period. The reason why that is so important is for many children, kindergarten is the first time they are now living within a congregate setting. And so it's important that immunization occur at that time. And two doses of MMR are required prior before entering into kindergarten. The state itself allows for multiple ways to get exemptions. These are forms that are filled in and then should be, in most cases at least, shared with the school. There are personal, medical, and religious reasons for exemption. They are dependent upon the family or the guardian to request that exemption. Those exemptions are not challenged. It's really up to the family to decide whether they're comfortable with vaccines or not. They can, an exemption can be granted for all the vaccines that are required or for one. They can an exemption can be granted for all the vaccines that are required or for a specific one if chosen. Next slide. So we really wanted to spend just a little time as the Health Department to talk a little bit about vaccine safety and some common misconceptions. The reason for this is we are part of our educational approach to vaccines is to really ensure that the public en masse understands that safety is monitored regularly with vaccines. The vaccine for MMR has been available since 1971. That actually is why if you were born 1957 or before, the presumption is that you are most likely immune because you contracted the disease of measles, mumps, and rubella. That's what MMR stands for. Today, we're focusing primarily on measles. VAERS, which is a vaccine adverse event reporting system, is available to anyone to report any kind of adverse event to a vaccine. This is maintained by the federal government, but a provider can report, an individual can report, a family member can report. It's considered an early warning system, and we pay attention to it. We actually queried the VAERS system in the last three weeks to look at what has been reported specifically for measles in terms of vaccine adverse events since 2019. Since then, there have been 17 reports. The vast majority of these are what we call urticaria. That's a rash reaction and/or fever. Since 2024, in the state of Arizona, there was one VAERS report given. There were none in 2025. VAERS itself does not show that there's a causal relationship between a vaccination and what is being reported. However, it does give us insight, especially from the general public, to know whether there is some significant number of adverse reactions occurring due to a vaccine. And once again, we this data is queried for measles. VAERS data is available for every vaccine. Next slide. And we just wanted to go over some common misconceptions and what to just really address these and make sure people understand. Vitamin A and prevention of measles. Vitamin A does not prevent measles. However, vitamin A does have a role in individuals and/or communities that are vitamin A deficient. Before my current position, I spent four years doing global health, where we did supplement vitamin A in many communities that are low and middle income countries. However, at the current time, the recommendation for vitamin A is not to prevent measles. It can be given for acutely ill individuals that are hospitalized under the direction of a physician. We do not recommend that individuals themselves embark on supplementation for vitamin A. There is no indication that this is indicated in the United States. There is not a known large community that has vitamin A deficiency here. Homeopathic remedies to prevent measles. Once again, we're talking about prevention here. There is no known homeopathic remedies that we're aware of that prevent measles. Natural immunity is better than vaccine. You may have heard that there's been some indications that people have had what they call measles parties, similar to what people did decades ago for chickenpox parties, where you got children together to get them to have chickenpox prior to at that point a varicella vaccine. We do not recommend this. We do not believe that natural immunity is better than the vaccine. And the reason for that is because of the risks that accompany acute disease. The risks with the vaccine are very, very minimal. As you note, it's been around for decades. However, a small percentage of people that acquire measles, especially children, can become acutely ill. That has been evidenced by the deaths that we have seen up till today. Breastfeeding protects babies from measles, while breastfeeding and maternal antibodies do provide some protection to children and neonates. They do not provide adequate protection. Now, the difficulty is that the first vaccine is usually indicated between 12 and 15 months. In places and communities where there is an outbreak, that recommendation has been dropped to six months. So we do see early vaccination of children down to six months. That is not the recommendation in Pima County. In Pima County, because we have not had a case or an outbreak, we are abiding by the traditional recommendations. And then the MMR vaccine causes autism. There's been multiple scientific studies to disprove that. However, you're probably aware that the CDC has embarked on another, what we call a meta-analysis, to see if there is a relationship between MMR and autism. A meta-analysis means that they'll put together a numerable number of studies that have already been published and do an evaluation to see if there is a relationship. Next slide. I have two more slides. These are really about how to hopefully reassure you as a community and as a board. We are monitoring community protection through MMR vaccine rates. Should a case be reported, we will embrace and embark on timely epidemiological monitoring of that case, contact tracing and reporting. Those words should all be familiar with you. Those are the basis of how we stop transmission of diseases. We identify a case. We identify who may be at risk because of exposure to that case. And then we work with the cases and the contacts to ensure people are aware and the multiple options that are available to them, including with the highly recommendation that they get vaccinated if they are not. We have pushed out provider information. We are coordinating with other systems in the county, including the healthcare systems, to make sure that they are up to date in their response. We've asked hospitals to review their plans. We did internally conduct a measles preparedness drill. This was in February of '25. It was anticipating if and when we do get a case. I'm very comfortable saying that all of the divisions that were part of the Health Department participated in that drill, and we identified some issues where we needed to improve. We've already done those improvements, so we are ready if and when there is a case. Because measles is considered so as a sentinel event, one case, if there is just one case identified, we will stand up a virtual emergency operations center. That's the EOC. What that means is that we will bring all of our staff together. We will work with the other departments within the county and make sure that we are responding. And then finally, the last, which I think is really important, is to talk to you about next slide, to talk to you about the support for children, parents, and schools. And you can see this, we do have ready to go after I do this presentation, information and guidance that will go out to all our Pima County K through 12 schools, as well as childcare facilities. This includes information about what we know about measles and a letter in Spanish and as well as English that a facility, a school can choose to push out to their parents if they want. That is the letter that's noted on the second bullet. Finally, in response to Dr. Heinz's concern, which he had shared with me two weeks ago, we have the ability to stand up our mobile vaccine clinics to go to specific schools where we know that the vaccination rates are lower if the school chooses for us to participate. And I just want to share with you a few of these numbers. This is from kindergarten data from the Arizona State website. This is available data, so we actually know the names of these schools. But as we entered the 23 to 24 school year, and we know this is similar now, at that point, 53% of the schools had 95% immunity. So the vast majority of schools that don't have 95% immunization rates tend to be the smaller schools. They may be charter or private schools. Because we do have that list, it's a public list. I did not bring that list with me, but it is available on the website. Like I stated, we will be reaching out specifically to those schools to offer mobile vaccination onsite if they want. I want to remind everyone that vaccination for children does require parental permission. There is written permission that would be required. We will not just be giving vaccinations. And with that, I will stop, and I appreciate the time to present to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cullen. I'm going to turn it back to Supervisor Heinz because he said that he had some comments that he wanted to make after your presentation, and I'll open it up to other supervisors. Go ahead Supervisor Heinz.
Thank you Chair Scott, and thank you Dr. Cullen. I really appreciate that. And I didn't see that or hear that from with regard to the slide deck, but could you just throw out some of the like signs, symptoms, that kind of thing? Just I know it sounds like you're going to be communicating that with, you know, through the school, to the schools, to parents in English and Spanish, which is fantastic. But just is that something you might be willing to do just briefly here? And then I wanted to talk a little bit about what I think we can do to mitigate this.
Yes Supervisor Heinz, Chair Scott, and the board. There is a fairly typical clinical presentation of measles. It usually starts with the three Cs, which are cough, coriza, that's runny nose, and conjunctivitis. At that point, most people do not have a rash. When the rash develops, which is what most people think of when they think of measles, it starts at the head and goes down from the hairline down the face to the rest of the body. Now, that is not 100% true, but by and large, that is what we look for. So symptoms of what would may appear to be a normal viral situation, and then coupled with the rash. The other thing you hear about repeatedly is a thing called Kopplick spots. Those are white spots in the mouth. You'll see lots of pictures of people opening a child's mouth to look inside. And that's what we call pathognomonic of the disease. That means if you see it, the only disease that causes that is measles. So a fairly rapid onset, but you can have remember, you have a delay. So seven to 14 days after exposure may be the wait you have prior to getting those three Cs, and then usually three to five days. Children with measles tend to be quite ill. People talk about a stare where a child themselves may have very limited engagement with what is around them, and that's because they feel so poorly. Thanks, Dr. Heinz.
Supervisor Heinz.
Thank you. Am I muted? No.
No, you're fine.
So thank you. So I think before, and it sounds like we'll be ready to respond should a case occur again in Pima County, I don't want to get there. I think we should we should jump on this right away. I do think that after our experience with the pandemic, we learned a lot. We saw mobile vaccination clinics all over, I think, all of our districts. I literally was giving COVID vaccinations to constituents. So I mean, it's we have the capacity to, I think, have a very targeted, not incredibly costly response that that looks at the 40, what 45 or 47% of schools where we're not hitting that 95% rate for matriculating kindergartners and be sure to, to the best of our ability, get mobile units there. The rate of personal belief exemptions has been going up and up and up. And a medical exemption, of course, understandable that there's been a reaction to other vaccines or the child, you know, has some known allergy that would prevent administering that, that's fine. And those folks are protected by the herd immunity being 95% around them. But there's not really a valid religious exemption. Personal belief, unfortunately, in the state of Arizona, you can just say it doesn't. And I get it, parents are incredibly busy. They have multiple jobs, maybe it's a single. So if you're matriculating with your kindergartner, you didn't get the full series done, or you did one of them, but not the other for the MMR, and a staff member at the school says, oh, don't worry, you can you can just sign this personal belief exemption, and they can go ahead and matriculate, no big deal. And it is a big deal. And I know everybody wants to be more efficient and save time, but if at those schools where we have that rate below 95%, we have the option of not just the personal belief exemption, but hey, there's a mobile unit right there, there's only two people in line, just take, take your kiddo right over there, and you'll be good to go. Right? And that's just, I think, we as the public health authority for Pima County, I think we can and should do that. And I think I'd love to hear Dr. Cullen's thoughts on that, and eventually I will make that a motion.
So in terms of what you referenced in your last slide, Dr. Cullen, and what Supervisor Heinz mentioned in the item where he said he's proposing that the county establish a program to deploy mobile vaccination units to all Pima County schools with vaccination rates below 95%. Could you address, as was noted on the final slide, how those how we're following up with the 47% of schools that have, according to state data, below that 95% rate?
Yeah Chair Scott, Board of Supervisors, Supervisor Heinz, we are in the process of doing a few very specific things. One is we will be sending out this letter to the schools, private charter, parochial, public, as well as early childhood care centers to let them to alert them to what the signs of measles are, what they should look for, and what we know about the rates. We will then secondarily follow up specifically to the schools that are have been noted by the state Health Department to have rates below the 95%. Now, most of these schools are smaller schools with perhaps 20 children in kindergarten, and our focus will be on kindergarten. And the reason for that is by the time you are four to six years old, you need two MMRs. What we see in early childhood education, which is the preschool, and remember, the first dose, well, you don't need to remember because I didn't tell you, the first dose is between 12 and 15 months. The second dose is between four and six years. The early childhood education have higher rates than 95% overall. Overall, they're about 96%. What we see is the failure to get that second shot, which you would need for kindergarten in most cases, because you are between the ages of four to six. So our focus will be on the schools that are falling below 95% in the kindergarten setting. We will reach out directly to them. And at this point, the plan is to ask them if they would like us to have a mobile vaccine come on campus or to their facility and give them the information that can be needed for parental consent. Parental consent can be asynchronous, which means it could be done at home. They could send home the standard consent form and bring it back. Ideally, the parent would be with the child, but asynchronous consent is allowed within the state for that. And in that way, we will attempt to ensure that all these facilities at least have access to a mobile vaccine clinic. The issue of going beyond an offer about a mobile vaccine clinic, we have not gotten there yet. Our hope is that most will just take us up on this offer. At the same time, our clinics, our three clinics are offering immunizations, eight to five, Monday through Friday, in most cases, for children independent of insurance status. It doesn't matter if you are on Medicaid. It doesn't matter if you have private insurance. It doesn't matter if you are not insured. Vaccine for children program enables us to give you the vaccines for you, for you as an adult, for you as a child, for your children, and for anyone else in your family that needs it. So our hope is that by doing increased communication and press on the need for this, that many people may choose to just come to our facilities. It is true what Dr. Heinz talked about, that the exemption rates, which remember, can be personal, religious, or medical, are higher in certain schools. Those rates, once again, are published rates. So that's why our initial approach is really to offer to come to the schools. We do know that private and charters have a higher exemption rate than the public schools.
Thank you, Dr. Cullen. So Supervisor Heinz, you said that you wanted to entertain a motion. I don't know if you're intending to expand upon what Dr. Cullen has laid out, but go ahead with whatever it was that you were proposing in association with your item.
Sure. So I would move that we direct county administrator in conjunction with Dr. Cullen and our Health Department to develop a plan to deploy the mobile vaccination units, to coordinate with the schools, and get those units onsite at schools where they would like them to be present, and to get back to the board with that plan in 90 days with a goal to make sure this is ready to go before the next matriculating school year.
Thank you.
I'll second.
That's moved and seconded by Supervisor Gohalva. Any discussion Supervisor Gohalva?
Thank you for proposing this. I think that in light of the cuts to Medicare and the fact that 2 million Arizonans utilize Medicare, and in our rural areas, 36% of the people would be, so it's disproportionately impacted people that are rural versus people that are urban. That's why I assume that a lot of the schools you're talking about are kind of smaller and out of the way. I think that it's important for Pima County to fill in the gaps in service wherever we can. I'm glad that you're going to be bringing forward a proposal, and I'm wondering if we're limiting this plan to MMR, or if we could include flu and other vaccines? I don't know. But if you as you're planning it out, if you can think about it, because I also understand that there is a cost issue. So when you're thinking about the plan, help us to understand what the impact might be if our federal government isn't going to reimburse like they used to reimburse for some of these common vaccinations.
Thank you Supervisor. Supervisor Christie.
Thank you. Just to be clear, what Supervisor
Just to be clear, what Supervisor Hines is proposing is to remand it to the administration to come back with a plan, and at that time, we'll vote to approve it or not, correct?
That's right.
Yes. Okay. So I would support that motion to come back with a plan as long as it included certain elements. First of all, in the resolution itself, it says, "Recent data indicate that MRR vaccination rates are dropping." And we did a little research in our office. We looked at the CDC analysis that goes back to 1985. And it shows on this chart that the highest incident since 1985 was in 1990, and that had 27,000 cases, almost 28,000 cases in the entire country. Then it drops precipitously in 91 to 9,600 cases, and then in 92 down to 2,000. And from 93 all the way to 2024, it never goes above 250 cases. And right now, according to the CDC on this chart, there have been only 301 cases in the country reported. And I'm having a hard time equating this as another COVID epidemic and that we are in a pandemic situation, especially when, also in the resolution, it says, "We propose the creation of a Pima County outreach program." There has not been any presentation or discussion of a fiscal impact for this. My question is, how are we going to pay for this? Who's going to pay for it? And how much does it cost? And I also have a question. Where is the, is there a problem of availability for people who want to have their, their kids or whoever receive the vaccination, measles vaccination? Where is the unavailable areas?
Were you posing your questions Supervisor Christie to Supervisor Hines or to administration?
I, to either to Dr. Cullen or, well, that's the administration.
Okay.
Or to Dr. Hines. Where is it, where is a problem where you cannot get an MMR?
Administrator Lesher.
And I just want to be clear, Supervisor, Chair Scott and Supervisor Christie, when you began, you'd indicated that you had three questions you wanted us to include when we respond in the plan.
Yes.
So is, so if that, identify, identify where there's a problem.
Yep.
And indicate that, what is the cost of an outreach plan? And then...
How long is it going to be in effect?
And then 300 cases in the country, what is the significance? Do we really think it's a problem? I think is what I heard, and you'd like us to include those elements in our response plan in 90 days. Is that correct?
That sums it up. And that's when we will vote on the plan.
Yes.
Thank you, Supervisor. Any other questions or comments on the motion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, thank you. Was it, was it a clarification or does he need to amend his motion because it doesn't sound, it sounded like the county administrator was speaking to the motion when she did that? Okay. All right. So all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes 5-0. Thank you, Dr. Cullen. Thank you, Supervisor Hines. We did have a time certain item at 11, but because we have an audience member who I know is interested in item number 11, I'm going to ask that we go back to the regular agenda because I don't think this will take a lot of time. This is item number 11, Endeavor Active Living Catalina Foothills Tucson LLC to provide an exchange agreement to develop a multifamily apartment development adjacent to the north bank of the Rito River and west of the Chuck Huckleberry Loop-Craycroft parking lot in Trailhead. I will move the item. Yes? Thank you. And we are going back to sitting when we consider this item as the Flood District Board. Thank you, Ms. Menriquez. So I will move item number 11. Second? Thank you. And just for my colleagues' benefit, we previously approved a specific plan for the project in question. It included approving the current zoning, so the zoning is not in question here. Today's item is an updated exchange agreement. It's required because the original agreement that was, that we approved in 2022 expired a year later. The new agreement is with one of the original developers and a new finance partner. The agreement allows for access by the developer across county land to access Craycroft Road. Some benefits to the county in the agreement include additional trailhead parking, connection of public bathrooms to the sewer, they are now on septic, and the construction and operation of a public amenity at the trailhead. So what we're essentially doing is just going back, approving a new exchange agreement because some of the parties have changed and, and thus we need a new agreement. Any further comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, thank you, that we're just, they're granting an easement and gives us a little better access to the loop.
Yes, absolutely. Any further questions or comments on this item? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes 5-0. All right. Now, we will go to our time certain item. Sorry that it wasn't as certain as, as we wanted it to be. This is item number 22, Fiscal Year 2025-26 Capital Improvement Program and Overall Budget Development Overview. We do, we will have a presentation from former supervisor and current Judge of Green Valley Justice Court, Judge Carroll. But before I turn it over to Judge Carroll, just wanted to see Ms. Lesher, if you wanted to go through your presentation or if we should wait until after?
We, our presentation today focuses on the capital improvement project. We are prepared to have any discussions about ongoing with the budget. So I think if you're asking people to speak to something other than the capital improvement, then you might want to do that.
All right. Then we will ask Judge Carroll if you're ready, if you could step forward. Thank you, sir.
Fill out a speaker's card. Sorry about that. You want me to fill one out?
Hold on, just a second. You, no, you do not need to fill out a speaker's card. Supervisor Hines, can you let us know if you're present because both Supervisor Grijalva and Supervisor Christie had to step away from the dais? He is here. All right. Okay, you've spared Ms. Menriquez some anxiety. All right. Judge Carroll, thank you, sir.
Thank you, all supervisors, Ms. Lesher, especially Ms. Menriquez today. It's been a tough week for Pima County, and I was able to see Supervisor Grijalva and give our condolences now. And I appreciate all the friends and staff that also worked right in this room with the congressman. We are sad to see him leave when he left the county board for Congress, but especially sad from house to house in Green Valley to see him leave. His friends and family now. The most important thing I just wanted to touch on today was an ask about our growth in Green Valley. Thank you for listening to the Board of Supervisors. When you talk about our forecast, I wanted to just be aware that we're just asking in three points. There's a PCN request that we're looking for a court case manager generalist. We've had great success recently hiring two U of A graduates, both fluent in Spanish, who were able to pick up the reins. And it takes a little time to train a person, but it was an excellent series of interviews. And we wanted to say that Workday is possible to hire people through. It was, it took a little while to get the kinks out earlier when we switched over. And we appreciated all the help that we had from the county HR. Lastly, when we look at our growth this year, we had stats to prove it. We have a dashboard that the Supreme Court provides and the Office of the Courts around the state provides that shows that our growth has been phenomenal in Green Valley, especially since we inherited the former precinct that was occupied by Judge Doug Taylor two years ago. All of our forecasts have been met and we're accurately provided background for you. It includes each year, we've put on a couple hundred more misdemeanors, a couple hundred more civil filings, including evictions, small claims, and regular cases. We, we, our limits are $10,000, but we approach our limits now almost 50% of the time on, on these types of filings. We've had nine, we've had 1,000 new civil traffic cases. It was really a lot to absorb. But this year, we find out that the good news is for the courts that they're correcting a wastewater collections. This is point number two. So when we're having 1,000 in this altogether, a 30% increase in our cases last year, just when that was settling in, we worked the bugs out. We're now going to have the Tucson wastewater collections cases, all the Pima County wastewater collections cases filed in Green Valley under the court where they should have been filed all along. So that's going to include about 700 to 800 minimum, that's a conservative estimate of new cases. So just when we're grasping, you know, getting above water, unfortunately for our clerks, we're going to have more cases and a new caseload. So I wanted to say we can justify the new PCN. It's for one generalist. The phones ring constantly at our court. The work window is always walk-in traffic with everything from civil to protection orders and even wedding license. We had 100 people last week for Free Wedding Friday. It's, it's an incredible place to work. We hope that now that our staff surveys are out, they feel the same about us that we feel about them. We're devoted and we, we really certainly enjoy working, the work that we're doing. And the exhibits that I have include, again, our forecasts. You know, in the state of Arizona, this is a good comparison, hopefully, and I'll leave you on this note, a billion dollars were the revenues from the Arizona State Court, Courts budget. So the billion dollars was the budget for the, pardon me, was the budget for the state Arizona Courts budget. And the revenues were collected 350 million, so a third. Our budget is close to about $900,000, and we collect last year $732,804 of revenues. February was our biggest month ever. I take the money to the bank at lunch hour every day, to the Bank of America, and we had a $71,000 month in February. So it just shows that although we increased our caseload by 25% this year, our increased revenue is 21%. It just continues to grow every year, including this memo that I just reminded you of with wastewater, we're going to get like another 600 to 800. And lastly, my predictions for the caseloads continue to rise, not just because due to wastewater this year, but there's a lot of urgency in Green Valley. You responded with our probation officer earlier when we came back here in October. But the night, right now, I have to tell you that domestic violence charges have increased. We appreciate the Sheriff's Department and all the work that they do on this. Following, back in 2020 before COVID, we've had 140% increase. It's steady and it's urgent. And we've hired the probation officer, but it's not just a just add water situation. These are cases that have come down the pike. We're now up to 12. And anybody who has basically two cases like this is now in our treatment program, which follows as clinicians' recommendation to address the root causes of an offender's behavior and to reduce recidivism. Lastly, so it's pretty much like our DUI court, which many of you have visited. We just want to say thank you for your time this morning and hopeful that we will see one more PCN for a generalist clerk before, even though it's going to be a very difficult year, we understand that. But before, we wanted to plan ahead, certainly because of our absorption of the former precinct and the work that we're doing. Thank you for your time. Any questions?
Thank you, Judge Carroll. Any questions from supervisors for the judge? All right.
Thank you, Melissa, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time and for you coming down here.
Welcome to a...
All right. We will turn it back over to the county administrator for the presentation that she and her team have prepared.
Thank you very much, Chair Scott. Again, today we're focused on the capital improvement program. We hear today is Rod Lane, the Director of Project Design and Construction, along with Art Coron and Andy and Javier from our budget team. I think we're going to start with you, Mr. Lane. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Scott. Excuse me. Good morning, Chair Scott, board members, Ms. Lesher. This morning, I'll be introducing you to the next evolutionary step in Pima County's integrated infrastructure plan.
Excuse me, Rod, can you either get a little closer to, yeah, sorry. Thank you, sir.
Let's start over again. Good morning, Chair Scott. Now I can hear it. Board members, Ms. Lesher. This morning, I'll be introducing you to the next evolutionary step in Pima County's integrated infrastructure plan. The IIP was first introduced in 2019. It's a plan to capture various capital project needs over a 10-year period. The plan collates this information into a single planning document to assist with identification... Excuse me, can you move to the next slide, please? There we go, there's the cover sheet. The plan collates this information into a single planning document to assist with identification of potential efficiencies and better use of county's limited resources. On the screen is the cover sheet and the public link to the PDF printout for the fiscal year 2027 through 2036 IIP, which includes fiscal year 2026 funding requests. This updated IIP won't be available until after this presentation. So this afternoon, the link will be, should be activated. Can you go to the next slide, please? The plan is essentially a live document and will be maintained and updated to the Project Design and Construction Department. The plan is informed by each department, reviewing slash updating their existing needs, reviewing their department-specific planning resources, reviewing and incorporated county adopted initiatives and strategic planning documents, prioritizing and organizing these needs such as to allow for appropriate planning, design, and delivery. Each department then reviews those with county administration. The process then moves into the capital improvement programming process where the finance department uses this information to develop the tentative capital improvement plan. Each department then meets with both the finance department and county administration to further refine the tentative CIP, which takes us to the point we're at today, where Mr. Coron will present the tentative CIP to the board to further refine it with the intent of approval in June, at which time the process starts all over again, hence the circle, and will continue, will continue on as a, as a live document. Since this is a live document, the plan is to take snapshots at two critical points in the process and then publish these to the website. The first spot at which we're going to take the snapshot is the tentative CIP as is presented to the Board of Supervisors. So that's what you'll see on the page today. And then after the Board of Supervisors approves the CIP, we'll then take another snapshot of it and also put that on, on the website. Next slide, please.
If I may interrupt for just a moment, if I may, Chair Scott, and one thing I want to comment on, this may not seem like a lot, but one of the things you have before you today and the, and the movement that's occurred with this team, you see before you and our deputies, is that now what the board will be able to review is our budget will actually be the first year that overlays on the five-year process, which is CIP, which actually overlays on the 10-year process, all of which that relates to the budget. And sadly, this has not really been the case before. And I think for departments and people who want to understand how to, how to impact the, the infrastructure plan and to make sure that we're getting programs designed and constructed or moved, it was not as clear as to when there could be impact in the system. So I just wanted to take a moment to really thank the team to make sure that there's an understanding of how significant this new system might be so that we can all plan for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. So here's an example of the page, and it kind of demonstrates to Ms. Lesher's point how this whole thing comes together. And I think Mr. Coron will speak more to this as well. You can see the red line across the top, and that represents kind of the whole 10-year process that goes through with the IIP, including the current funding year that we're looking at in 2026. And then the second red line is the five-year plan. So it's really just the next five years of it that will show the current CIP or the tentative CIP, whichever it is. And then we'll get down to the one year. So we're referring it to kind of the 10, 5, 1 view of the whole planning process from initial planning of 10 years out to looking at the actual budget process of the, of the current year we're looking at. To the bottom left, you'll see where that printed date is for each time we publish, and that'll give you an idea of the snapshot when this was taken. And they'll all be published on the website as we, as we progress through this process on an annual basis. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Quaron, my colleague, to talk about the CIP program.
Can you forward the slide, please? Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Ms. Lesher. I think this slide really hits on what Ms. Lesher was, was talking about just a minute ago in terms of how our departments collaborate together and how the IIP and the CIP are interrelated. So as, as Mr. Lane mentioned, the 10-year IIP identifies the needs countywide, which then through that process that, that he talked about a little bit ago, is vetted and refined with county administration, which then feeds our CIP, what you see in the budget documents and what we'll, what we'll get into a little bit in a few minutes, that feeds the five-year CIP funding plan. And then that five-year CIP funding plan then correlates to the FY25/26 CIP budget, which is the one year that you'll approve in June and you'll see here today. So I think this is a high-level overview of how the documents are interrelated and how we work together and collaborate with one another on the creation of both the IIP and the CIP. Next slide, please. So this slide here is a prospective view of what we're projecting for our CIP needs out into fiscal year 2930. It may be a little hard to see on the slide. The white bar is representative of our CIP requests for 2526. And I'll take the opportunity to remind the board that this is a fluid document, that no firm decisions have been made. But as of today, the request is a little over $200 million. It's 200 million, 200 million, 300,00562 with a total five-year CIP of just north of $900 million. How this relates to the 2526 budget is about an $8 million reduction over the current year adopted budget of 208 million in FY25. Over the past four fiscal years, that's, that number is 874. So you can see the, the need in terms of CIP is growing at the county. And so just want to highlight that on this slide. Next slide, please. This slide talks about our five-year overview by department. I realize that some of the minor departments may not be, may be able to be seen from the dais, but what I want to identify here is the, is the larger departments that really drive our CIP. Red is wastewater. They have a large capital program that is funded by their, their own department. Yellow is transportation, as you probably all know, a great need in our community for roads and street improvements. And we also have facilities, especially in the early part of the CIP in '26 and '27, they're represented by the gray bar. That's really related to facilities maintenance countywide. And then the, the other large department is flood control. And you heard from Mr. Shep a little bit earlier and that they are almost north, just north of 20 million for the fiscal years going out to 2028. Next slide, please. So as we talk about, but what are the requests from the departments for 2526? Again, this total is just north of $200 million, highlighted by wastewater with a little, about 63 million with, in the red circle there. I mentioned facilities, they have a 40 million, 40.6 million dollar request. Transportation is 17.4 million and flood control at just over 25 million at 26.1. Some of the projects that we've talked about here, wastewater as a Tres Rios BioSolids program of 10.8 million, a couple of, a couple of other projects just north of 9 million for wastewater. Flood control has a couple of projects at the fairgrounds for 4 point million, $4 million. And they have flood plainland acquisition, again, at about 4 million of that 26. At facilities maintenance, you'll see a large portion of that is at the Superior Court to intended improvements, 18.3, and then another 5.3 at 33 North Stone. Again, just highlighting a few of the projects that are driving each of these departments. I'm going to pause here before I go on to the funding to see if there's any questions in my presentation thus far.
Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Christie. Just want to make a quick comment regarding Mr. Lane. I was on the State Transportation Board for five years and I still have contacts with, with that department. And they have advised me since you left there and came down here, the Arizona Transportation Department has deteriorated so drastically. So we're glad you're down here. Just as a note, I, I'll sit and listen to the presentation and try to see the numbers, but we didn't get any background on this. We didn't get any information in our background. This is a lot of money. This is a lot of projects. It's a lot of information to digest, information I can't even see. I would like to be able to continue this item and, and receive the background that is applicable to the presentation so we can make some educated decisions on this. I can't, I don't feel comfortable with this kind of money and these kinds of projects making any kind of determination on how we should spend it because it does say discussion, direction, action. Now, if it's just going to be discussion, then I'm fine with it. But if we are asked to take action, I'm uncomfortable not having the information at hand.
To, to, to follow up on that point, I don't know if this is pending in the presentation, but I'd certainly appreciate knowing how the CIP requests fit in with the priority areas in the budget that were outlined last time. And Supervisor Christie makes a, a point that we're being asked to provide direction on inclusion of these projects in the county's overall 2526 budget, provide direction on the incorporation of these requests into the capital improvement program budget. So getting a better sense of how they fit into the budget framework that was outlined at our last meeting, I think would, would be very helpful. And we can certainly return to this item to get into more of that granularity after our time certain item at, at noon.
And Chair Scott and Supervisor Christie, be clear, I'm not sure, we put on action, should the board wish to take any, but much like the supplemental that we had at the last board meeting, we've just, this is a very different way we've handled the budget in the past. We simply bring you the final documents. We were looking last time to introduce you to all the different supplemental requests that have occurred. This was designed for us to be an overview and an introduction into the capital program. We don't need, we do not need specific direction today, but what I'd be interested in is what more is helpful from the board's perspective to make decisions when they come to you on the capital budget. Because I think historically, frankly, the capital budget has simply been part of the budget and approved without a great deal of discussion or really a look at all the different elements. So happy to use today simply as the introduction and to welcome any and all questions that we can then provide the board for discussion at the April 1st meeting.
And Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
To Ms. Lesher's point, that'd be great with the background supplied after this meeting. Also, I would invite Mr. Lane and the finance department and your office or whoever you designate to visit with each supervisor. We have staff meetings twice a month. I, I know that my staff would like to be very much apprised of the situation and I think it would be a better interchange than, than watching a slide presentation that is very difficult to ascertain.
Thank you, sir. And I hope today is simply the sort of laying the foundation or foaming the runway a bit so that you all know the kinds of communication you can have. And we're more than happy to have staff meet individually with each of the board. Thank you.
And then just to reiterate, Ms. Lesher, either later in this presentation or as a follow-up to the board, hearing how some of these requests from the various departments are incorporated into those four priority areas that were outlined last time is going to be helpful for me to see how they fit. No, I, I assume that might be the case, but that's going to be helpful in terms of knowing how they fit in with, to use the language from the, the agenda item report, how they are included in the recommended budget. Any other questions or comments before we turn it back to Mr. Quaron? All right. Sir, thank you.
Chair, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Supervisor Heinz, did you have a question? I, I can't see you because we have the slides up. Go ahead Supervisor.
Okay. So just quickly, on that last, like, pie thing, can just someone clarify for me what PDC is? Have at the bottom there. It's probably really obvious.
Project Design and Construction and Supervisor, I'm sorry, Chair Scott and Supervisor Heinz, I'm about a year ago now, I believe, I'm trying to, we divided what was then the Facilities Management Department to have the ongoing sort of maintenance, if you will, of the buildings that continues under the direction of Tony Sisneros. We split from that the actual construction, design development of buildings. That is the new Project Design and Construction Department that is led by Mr. Lane.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Heinz. Go ahead, Mr. Quaron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I have just one final slide if we could advance the slide. And this really just relates to the funding sources that are funding the CIP projects. So you'll see in the red, again, correlated with wastewater throughout the presentation. They're the, the largest funding source at 65, a little over 65 million. We have grant funding at 29.2, some certificates of participation that we've already issued that, at a little over 21 million, and then flood control at 17.8. So that really is just a diagram of, of our funding sources for FY26. You may note that the funding sources are 197 while the requests are 200. Some of this is due to funding from the prior year that is, that is being carried forward. With that, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have related to this item.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Quaron? Supervisor Christie.
I want to thank our clerk for advising me that I can put that screen on my computer here, but then I got to put my glasses on. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor. Anything else for either Mr. Quaron or, or Mr. Lane or Ms. Lesher? I had a couple of questions, not so much connected with the CIP project, but the other part of this item, which is overall budget development for the fiscal year 2526 budget. Just wondered if there were any updates for the board on, on what was presented last time with regard to the strategic framework that was presented and, and how that is helping to shape overall budget development.
Chair Scott, the team continues to meet, the finance team is meeting daily. We meet with the deputies at least weekly to continue to see what we believe next year's budget's going to look, what the revenue is going to look like, which will significantly inform all of the different requests. At this point in time, what we really are focusing on is the various supplemental requests, looking at how they relate into current needs with the understanding that right now we are dollars short to fund the current budget. If we took next year and brought it forward, we're, I'm going to say 20, we're, we're million, a couple, about 20 million.
Without?
Without adding a single supplemental.
Without adding a single supplemental and any of the?
And then we begin to look at the supplementals and they are in buckets. The, if we look at categories one and two, we're still, those are adding up to about 40 million at this point, looking at a few of the priorities. So we still continue to struggle with how we're going to fund the current year, much less look at any of the supplementals. And then with that, as we all know, we continue to monitor the federal and state pictures to see what is coming through to this, come to us. We are planning by next Monday to have a really first draft of how we balance a budget for next year and what a tentative recommendations might begin to look like, which would then be our first opportunity to really come back to the board at the April 1st agenda and show you our, again, this is all still the work in progress. We send the tentative budget out to the board the last Friday in April. But my hope is we'll show you our first chop at, an actual balanced budget and what might tentatively be recommended at this point with the various funding sources we believe are, are possible.
Ms. Lesher, thank you very much. And, and just so my colleagues know, we will have items on the agenda in both April meetings dealing with the overall budget development process. I'm wondering, Ms. Lesher, if at the April 1st meeting, the board could get a report on what might be the ramifications of changing the percentage for the general fund reserve? It's recommended to be between 15 and 17% of expenditures. We have it at 17%. Certainly wouldn't want to go below 15, but if we could get some?
If I may, Chair Scott, right now, I believe, moving from 17 to 15% is about a 12.2 million dollar advantage to the county. What we are looking at is the, the board policy that was recommended, the 17% was based on two things, making sure that we kept our bond rating where it is and an estimate of about two months general fund operating. We're looking at two things. Staff is in touch with our bond council to see if there is an impact on our bond rating with that adjustment. The second thing is as our budget goes down, the amount we need for the two months, operating expenses is estimated to go down. So at this point, those are the things we're looking at and to be able to come back and say, we believe that we would not recommend, I will, amending the budget, the board policy, but to looking at a perhaps one-time adjustment to the 15% if we can show you that it does not impact your bond rating and that it will still cover the two months.
And we're just waiting.
But it will be 12.2 million. And we're waiting to hear from that. We will have that.
From bond council.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Lesher. And then another big-ticket item in, in terms of how the, the budget is structured and certainly has specific impact on the, on the capital improvement program are the Pago percentages. And wondered if, for both the board and the, and the media, if you could give an overview of how Pago is currently funded and what options the board might be able to consider if possible moving forward.
Chair Scott, and this is, the Pago, if we recall, was a, in effect, the Band-Aid, the, the policy that the board put in place to ensure that we had dollars available for infrastructure projects after a couple of rounds of very unsuccessful attempts to get bonds passed in the community. As a county that every decade or so went out with about another $100 million bond package, we did not have that any longer. We looked at Pago. What we look at currently is 60, 60%. We look at 60% of the increase in the assessed valuation for the year and 60% in the additional dollars that are available as we pay down debt since we don't have those, since we're not paying on old bonds anymore in that way. We look at that 60, 60% and see what that number is and see how we allocate it towards primarily transportation, but all of our critical infrastructure needs. We've been tweaking around a bit and looking at coming back. We can, what does it mean if we're at 70, 70, 50, 50, 80, 80? What does that do? I'm not going to attempt to explain, maybe someone will have that with us today, but happy to provide that to the board of what that looks like. Because we look at it quite a bit about what any of those tweaks up and down might be. Mr. Quaron or Andy, anybody?
Ms. Lesher, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we can certainly bring that back. We have that analysis. I don't have that in front of me today, but we can bring that back as requested on 4-1.
I, I would appreciate that greatly. And just to go back to a point that you made with regard to the priority areas and the supplementals, are the items in the CIP also put into those priority areas or has that already been done as part of each department going through that process that was laid out for us today?
Mr. Chairman, we have not formally gone through that. When we meet and look at each of the projects, there's a discussion about how it impacts the system. We've not necessarily put them in those categories. And to some extent, the operating budget begets the priorities of the capital because if we're building parks and, you know, we're, we're looking at continuation of programs. But I'm looking to staff, I, we have not done that, the allocation with the additional column by project with the priorities, but we can certainly do that and provide that to the board.
I would absolutely ask that and also given what we are trying to accomplish in terms of getting the budget into balance, maybe in the discussion of projects that go into different priority areas, we can also consider which ones could reasonably be deferred into another budget year to help us get to that point of overall balance.
And if I? And if I may, Chair Scott.
Yes, ma'am.
One comment. We have just been finalizing and hope by the end of business today to send to the board another memorandum that is a delineation and exploration of revenue sources that I want to be clear. We have spent and we continue to spend significant time looking at the expenditure side and how we can cap, continue to modify the expenditure side. But at the request several times in the past from the board, really, you will see a chart of all the different funding opportunities that are available, be they bonds, jail districts, health districts, sales tax. What are any of the options that might be available to the board and what is requirement for each of those? Some require unanimous vote of the board, some require unanimous vote of the board to send something to the public for vote. We're simply providing to the board what all the options might be, not just for this year, but in years to come.
Thank you.
That you should have that by the end of the day.
Appreciate that greatly. Any other questions or comments on this item from board members? All right. Thank you, Ms. Lusher. Thank you to your team. Appreciate you all being here. We do have four executive session items. They are listed on the addendum, items three through six. I don't think so Supervisor Geralba, but I can ask, is there anybody in the audience who's waiting for an item that we can entertain before we go through executive session? I didn't think so. All right. Thank you for asking that. All right, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
And I'll second it. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
It is approved. Will be into exec until...
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we are ready to come back into session and need to announce as we're getting started that Supervisor Heinz, who was participating remotely due to professional commitments where he is traveling, has not rejoined the meeting and will not for the rest of the afternoon. The four executive session items on the addendum, items three, four, five, and six, were for information only, but we do have corresponding items also on the addendum. These are items 10, 11, 12, and 13. So we will first take up item number 10, litigation related to ARS 13-3108 and Arizona Citizens Defense League et al versus Pima County et al.
Supervisor Scott?
Yes.
I'd like to, for item 10, like to proceed as recommended in executive session.
I will second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes 4-0. Next item, number 11, proposed settlement in Pima County versus Vail School District Number 20 et al.
Chair Scott?
Yes, Supervisor.
I'd like to move forward to accept settlement as discussed in executive session.
I will second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That also passes 4-0. Item number 12 is litigation related to federal actions, and for action on this item, I'm going to recognize Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Chair Scott. We are seeking preauthorization of legal action up to but not including initiating or joining litigation, which would require additional board approval.
All right, I will make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Seconded by Supervisor Guralva. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. Item passes 3-1 with Supervisor Christie opposed. And then the final item, United States Department of Homeland Security Federal Emergency Management Agency letter to Pima County.
Supervisor Scott?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Scott, I'd like to proceed as discussed in executive session.
I'll second. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes 4-0. All right. Thank you all very much, and thanks to all of you out here for your patience. I know that was a lengthy executive session. All right. I think we are back on the regular agenda.
Mm-hmm.
Sure. Let's, thank you, Ms. Manriquez. Because we have staff here from our finance department who I hope had time to eat lunch, no, oh, now I feel even worse. We're going to go ahead and at the suggestion of your advocate, also known as our clerk, go to item number 20, the monthly financial update. Ms. Administrator Lesher.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Lesher. Mr. Chair members of the board, I have a really brief update on the financial update for March, which is through January, period seven. A couple of good news items. We continue to trend in the right direction with revenues and expenditures, to be quite honest. We saw a one, an additional 1.5 million in revenues as a result of increased sales tax, state share sales tax revenues coming in from the state, which is good news. And we have increased our projection for departmental revenues largely due to the elections, which I owe you from last month. Reason that that is projected to be over budget is twofold. One is increased fees that we were able to charge the jurisdictions, and then there were additional ballot questions from the jurisdictions that generated additional revenue for us as well. I owe you also from the Justice Court an explanation from last month. And really, the Justice Court is letting us know that the revenue, the projects lower revenues due to decline in court fee collections from this year. And then the Superior Court expects slightly higher than budget revenues driven by increased reimbursements for initial appearances and mandated services. So those are the follow-up items from last month that I promised to bring back. So you'll see on the first slide here, increase of 7.2 million coupled with the expenditure reduction of 2.9 leads us to, if you can change this slide, please, leads us to an available fund balance of 4.7 million. The combination of those two items added together, which is an increase of 1.8 million over where we were last month. Last month's fund, available fund balance was 2.8. This is 4.7, so trending in the right positive direction. On the expenditure side, not much has changed from last month. We still expect two departments to be over budget by 500,000 or more, and that's public defense services again and outside contracted counsel as well as the sheriff. And we continue to work with the sheriff to bring back the granularity that the board asked for last month. With that, Mr. Chair members of the board, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have related to our forecast through period seven.
Any questions or comments from board members? I will just say, Mr. Quarrone, I would appreciate it if you and Ms. Lesher would follow up with the sheriff. He has a different definition of initial appearance pay than what he understands has been cited in the financial forecasts. He also may be, and hope he will, be providing some documentation to the board about where he expects things to be at the end of this budget period and give kind of a historical overview since he became sheriff. And I'm expecting that he's going to be following up first with Ms. Lesher and then with the board so that we can get some more detail to add to the detail that's been in the monthly financial forecasts. But yeah, he wasn't, he had a different definition of initial appearance pay when I talked to him about it, so if you could follow up with him.
Will do, sir.
Thanks. All right. So now we'll go back to, oh, do they have to be here for 21, too? Those poor guys. All right. The quarterly report on collections, I'll move approval, acceptance of the report.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes 4-0. Now you can eat. Unless Ms. Lesher doesn't let you have lunch. Absolutely. Ms. Manriquez is everybody's advocate today, Ms. Davis, so we're going to move to item number 16, update on federal and state executive legislative and judicial actions that affect Pima County. Ms. Lesher, anything you wanted to say in introduction or just turn it over to Ms. Davis? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Chair Scott, members of the board, Administrator Lesher. It's an honor to be with you today to give the biweekly update on some of the activities at the federal and state level that affects county funding and/or programming slash services. Next slide, please. So just as a framework for how we've been kind of bifurcating all of this information as it comes through, there have been 89 executive orders issued by this Executive Office of the Administration. Some of those direct action, they redirect action or they rescind actions of the previous administration to which we are sensitive to the content of what is in those executive orders. And as of now, 121 is actually not accurate. It's now 127 legal actions in response to some of the executive orders and/or some of the workforce changes that are happening at the direction of the executive level of the federal government. Within those executive orders, while we are monitoring the content pertaining to funding, unless a funding source is specifically called out, we are operating off of the Office of Management and Budget memorandum that was issued and subsequently rescinded by which is the item of a court order and restraining order about blocking federal funding. So with that memorandum was a release of federal award numbers, and we match those award numbers across our grants portfolio to make sure that we are matching based on the direction of a federal agency, not necessarily the content of the executive orders unless it is specifically called out. So that's the methodology that we have used, and that is referencing the Office of Management and Budget direction and subject of the litigation that is in court right now. Another thing we will be talking about today is the substantial reduction in federal workforce and subsequent cascading of that effect with some of the data that we know, some of the data that we are anticipating and what those data sources are. As of March 14th, which was close of business Friday, we have, the Senate has approved and passed the continuing resolution, and we have added a state-level update for what is going on at our state legislature. What I will not be discussing today is anything about modifications to tariffs or regulations, but I will be including those in future presentations today specifically is going to be in and around funding. Next slide, please. So one thing, since I last spoke to the board two weeks ago, we have submitted our, our single audit, which we have now formally matched our data of the CFDA numbers, which is the catalog of federal-directed assistance as identified in the Office of Management and Budgets memo. The last presentation was approximations. These are exact numbers that will be presented within our single audit, so we are now using audited financials. So we are matching against fiscal year 2024 financial expenditure data to get a barometer of what we're kind of looking at as we plan for future budgets and/or if we do not get reimbursed in this current fiscal year. So as we highlighted in the last meeting, these numbers have been shifted a little bit from my last report. We have 105 million, which represents 67% of the fiscal '24 reported grant expenditures that are wrapped up within the American Rescue Plan Act, emergency rental assistance programming, emergency food and shelter programming, and the FEMA Shelter and Services Program. We're highlighting these as we're going through fiscal year '25 expenditures as well because one thing that has been received by the county that the board does know about is we have a letter received from FEMA notifying us that there is a temporary pause in reimbursement. We have been reimbursed $3 million, and we are expecting $10 million in reimbursement, which again has been paused. So we're still going to include these expenditures as things we're monitoring in lieu that we either won't get reimbursed for or run any risk of what we call recoupment, which would be a clawback of federal funding that had been issued to the county. What we're really going to look closely at is the 52 million, which is 33%. And like I said in our last update, that really represents over, let me pause, this affects over 20 county departments. Two of our biggest grant-receiving departments are Health Department and Community Workforce Development, by which that 52 million really does live. That is representative, the lion's share of that are federal and state pass-through block grants to which the county receives these funds every block grants, to which the county receives these funds every year. Some examples of those include our immunization dollars, our WIC dollars, that's Women and Infant Children, maternal-child health dollars, our WIIOA money, our CBBG funding. So block grants that affect health, human services, workforce, housing. Those are some critical services that the county does provide to this community. So what we're looking at very closely, not only are the audited fiscal '24 expenditures, but what we've spent to date to look at the rate of fiscal '25 expenditures. And when we tie all of that up, we will present that to the county administrator, deputy county administrators, departments, and the board to see if there will be any potential budget impact. One thing that did happen on Friday with the passing of the continuing resolution is we will have a lot more granular data around what has been budgeted within the continuing resolution passed on Friday. So we will look at those funding sources to see if they are still represented in that budget, so that we'll get a truer picture of what the county can anticipate to receive within this continuing resolution. So we'll, as we get through that data, we will continue to report out to the board. But that's the estimated impact if we look at fiscal '24 expenditures as we do any sort of planning, working with our county departments about what potential impacts we might have. Next slide, please. Just as a reminder, these are all congressionally-directed federal funds, and even some of the state pass-through grants, like WIIOA, are laws that are enacted by Congress. So all of these funding sources, as just a reminder, are tied to laws passed by Congress. So the American Rescue Plan Act was signed into law in 2021. The Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act was signed into law also in 2021, and we have been noticed of a pause in those dollars through the executive orders. The Inflation Reduction Act was signed into law in 2022, that, again, has been called out in the executive order. So we have given the board a list of those specific grants within the IIJA and IRA. And then the Shelter and Services Program is represented in the Consolidated Appropriations Act of 2023, by which we have recently gotten a letter from FEMA that those funds are paused for reimbursement. Something to, from the previous slide, something to note that within a lot of these, our grant portfolio is reimbursement-based. The majority of those grants are reimbursement-based dollars. And so, again, as we inform county administration on any sort of proposals or budget impacts, we will also be providing a distribution of how many of those dollars are awarded versus how many are reimbursement that the county is anticipating on getting funding back based on these congressionally-directed funds and the requirements therein. Next slide, please. We highlighted this a little bit Friday. Friday was the day the Senate advanced the bill to avoid a government shutdown. And again, with that comes the detail of those budgets. There have been significant cuts already discussed with the board in and around what is the risk to potentially Medicaid, FEMA, veteran services, among many others. In addition to that, we'll be crosswalking the proposed budget therein and looking against our grant portfolio to look at some of these grants that are issued with regularity through some of these congressionally-directed legislation. Next slide, please. So a couple of things are kind of cascading together, and one of which is monitoring whether or not we are getting reimbursed for the dollars that we are submitting for. What we know now is a lot of the portals are still open. What we're seeing is some of the federal funding agencies are reimbursing timely, some are not. And so we're continuing to monitor the lag in that to make a determination as we get through these eight weeks, where are we seeing reimbursements kind of hit our account and where are we lagging. One component of that is the compliance to the court orders. We know the Trump administration has appealed one of those court orders to pause federal funding. And so the determination of how those legislative, how those court orders kind of make their way through and the outcome of such will be one indicator. The other issue is that we have seen a unprecedented and substantial reduction in the federal workforce, and this is problematic for a few reasons. From a funding perspective, we're seeing changes in potentially our program officers and the people we rely on to get those funds to us and the people that we work with. The federal agencies themselves are taking the executive orders and giving us as recipients of those dollars directions, and we are working with our federal agencies as they direct. Some of those directions have been rescinded, and so we are moving in alignment with our federal funding agencies. But this is substantial, especially February, over Presidents' Day weekend. We know that thousands and thousands of employees with probationary status were relieved of their duties. That has since, as of March 13th, gone to court, where a federal judge ordered six federal agencies to rehire those probationary employees. So we will update you as the outcome of that. But pertaining to data and federal workers across Arizona, Supervisor Ellen, you had asked to get some preliminary data about impact locally. Depending on what data source you use, there is variability. If you use census data, there's roughly just about 64,000 federal employees across Arizona, 34,000 if you do not include the post office, or direct appointees, with a 12,000 estimate in Pima County. One thing I will say as a huge caveat to this, one data set that we will be looking at is the Bureau of Labor Statistics and the benefits data. And the April report, I think, will be telling with a little bit more clarity, I think may even more so, to determine how many folks were affected in February, especially over that Presidents' Day weekend kind of mass layoff, and whether or not there is resolution to the legal status of that court action pertaining to probationary employees. So that's something we are still very closely watching, because it's not just federal workers, it's contracted workers, it's grant-funded, it's academic institutions. So it's going to be a little bit larger than just the direct federal workers, and we'll continue to monitor that.
Pardon me for interrupting. What does UCFE stand for?
That is the Federal Unemployment Resource by which federal employees can go get their benefits if they are let go from the federal government. Next slide, please. So we worked very closely with our lobbyist, Michael Rossi, who is an incredible resource, who has been monitoring kind of the state-level activity. And so I will go pretty high level at this. I think the state legislature is seeing a lot of floor activity, and they are about two weeks behind in reviewing some of the bills that are still within second and third reads, within committees, and they're averaging about 10 to 15 days. There is a good amount of bills that potentially might pass along costs to the county, which, again, something that we're very closely monitoring. Lots of those are in the health and/or regulatory space. But until they are passed, we will give you an update as they are passed and what the financial impact would be to the county. We don't have progress or an update on the governor's office final budget, and we're expecting some new financial revenue numbers to come out in and around April 15th, but it's anticipated that there might be delays, as highlighted in the above bullets, that things are just moving a little bit, a little bit slower on a 10 to 15-day average. So that's a state legislative update. It is a busy, busy season, and we'll give more granular updates to the board as they become available and/or pass their committee. Next slide, please.
Can I just say with reference to that last point, I think all of you get the minutes from the Legislative Policy Committee for County Supervisors Association, and I think Ms. Davis did an excellent job of summarizing what has been a snail's pace of business at the legislature, especially with regard to any indication of what the budget is going to look like.
And with that, that concludes the bi-weekly federal update, and I am open to any questions. Thank you.
Questions or comments from board members? All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Davis. We're going to go back on the regular agenda to item number 13. If any of my colleagues have updates on boards, committees, and commissions, or from any of the other municipalities. Supervisor Gohal.
Thank you, Chair Scott. Just really quickly, we had a PAG RTA meeting on March 3rd. It was the first meeting in 2025, and so there's a little bit of concern there. The new leadership for both PAG and RTA boards, the chair is Mayor Regina Romero, City of Tucson. Vice chair is Mayor John Post, Morana. The treasurer is Mayor Tom Murphy. Saguaro for PAG. In RTA, the chair is Mayor Joe Winfield from Oro Valley. Vice chair is Tom Murphy for Saguaro, and I am the second vice chair. There's new membership for PAG RTA, which I think does change some of the dynamics. Myself, Mayor Roxana Valenzuela from the City of Tucson, Chairman Julian Hernandez Vascoyaki, and Mayor John Post with the town of Morana. So those did change some, I think, just the makeup of our board. We're basically having a discussion about the proposed ballot initiative on the November ballot, but there will also, the next meeting isn't until April. So moving parts, but thanks.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? All right. I went to a SUN Corridor board meeting last week. Wanted to thank Mr. DeBonis, because he was also present. It was out at Pima West, and we got a good presentation on their Center of Excellence for healthcare professions, and also a little bit of an update on where things are headed with the merger between the Metro Chamber and SUN Corridor. And all of you might have already gotten an invitation to the kickoff luncheon for that new organization that is going to be called the Chamber of Southern Arizona. That's on May 2nd, out at Star Pass. And the president of the United States Chamber of Commerce is going to be the keynote speaker. We'll hear a lot more about the structure of the new organization after that. Already encouraged you to take a look at LPC minutes as you get them, and I think that's it on my end. Anybody else? Nope? All right. Okay, then we'll go to item number 14, COVID-19 Presidential Executive Orders and Pima County Employees. This item was placed on the agenda by Supervisor Christie, and because of the length of our last meeting, he asked that it be continued to this meeting. So I'll turn it over to Supervisor Christie.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Excuse me. On January 20th, after the inauguration of the new administration, there was a generation of a list of initial rescissions of what they term as harmful executive orders and actions. And under their revocation or orders and actions, they've listed all of the executive orders that were revoked by President Trump, and a number of them were COVID-related. Executive Order 13987, executive order 13996, executive order 13997, EO 14002, executive order 14099. Revocation of orders and actions continue under EO 13994. These are COVID issues, revoking previous directives from the Biden administration. And I don't ever feel like I've gotten a full and complete disclosure about how the county handled its COVID matters and mandates as they relate to employees. I just want to share a couple of quick letters from various constituents. Good morning. I was a Pima County employee until I retired. I think that those of us who have retired and who were impacted by those egregious overpayments should also be reimbursed. As the Board of Supervisors voted repeatedly in favor of violating the rights of Pima County employees and residents during the years of COVID-related civil restrictions, they pushed emergency use shots on employees with little or no scientific justification for their decisions. Some Pima County employees were informed they would never be promoted, even after they submitted and had exemptions approved, while others were shuffled around to other jobs that kept them from performing their previous tasks that required interactions with the public. Some employees were forced to pay a higher insurance rate due to exercising their right to choose not to receive experimental injections. And as the item itself on number 14 states, my concern is including but not limited to those who left the county's employ, those who were charged differential health insurance rates, or were rehired in a lesser role or pay rate. And also, we're requesting, together with a report of the status of any related litigation that has gone underway at the county level. I would be willing to submit these to you, Ms. Lesher, in the interest of time for you to respond to in writing, as so outlined by my just-made statement, as well as what I read from, unless, of course, you have something that you want to share now, but it might be more of an ability for you to look at these individually. So I will submit these and wait for your response to the questions so underlined.
Okay. And thank you, Chair Scott, and thank you, Supervisor Christie. Happy to just, if I can get a quick overview of what we do know, and then happy to respond in some different length. At this point, what we know, there were a total of 20 individuals that we know who were terminated during the COVID situation because of COVID-related issues. 19 of the 20 were reinstated. We had 236 employees who paid an additional $45.51 for about one year due to, there was, they did pay extra who were unvaccinated. That ended in September of '22. We do have, there were three cases that I was just asking Mr. Brown about, and that we can get additional information about the status of any of that litigation. I will tell you as I be, I'm sorry.
Were those employees that were charged the $45 a month for a year, were they reimbursed?
They were not. We will begin to look through the information. Some of what I'm concerned about is that saying if people were rehired at a lesser role because they had left over COVID, we don't have those kinds of records necessarily, because if someone left voluntarily because they didn't like the rules, for example, we would not have that in any historic record. When they then, if they came back once the rules changed, that wasn't necessarily in any of the hiring or resignation materials. We can put some anecdotal information together that's a couple of years old, but other than the people who were specifically disciplined for, left, and we know were rehired after the merit commission, or the 236 individuals who paid an additional amount, we do have very specific records about that. We have it as well about the litigation. Some of the, "I didn't like it and I left," maybe we came back. We may have a more difficult time getting you those specifics.
Mr. Chair, Ms. Lesher, it would seem possible during the exit interview I'm sure you make with employees that are leaving, that they could, at that point, voice their reasoning as to why they left, and that might be part of the record?
Some did, some did not.
Okay. And as to the COVID-related executive orders that were rescinded, if you could please, there's what, seven or eight of them? If you could please look at each one and see if they apply or do not apply to anything related to Pima County employees.
Yes, thank you.
And then, Mr. Chair, for the interest of time, I'd be glad to submit all that in writing for Ms. Lesher's response.
Thank you. And if, I'm sorry, Mr. President. Any other questions or comments on item number 14? All right. So if you want, item number 15, which was also added to the agenda by Supervisor Christie dealing with the aerospace research.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Basically, this is pretty straightforward. It's been a while since we've heard on any reporting from the county regarding projects that were county either funded or supported or otherwise, I'm sorry, were otherwise funded or promoted by county activities in various assortments, particularly vector launch worldview. The last update we heard on that was of February of '24. And the battery factory, it appears they've had two groundbreaking ceremonies now, and can you give us a status update? update on those three properties and, and what their status is and what, what the plans are for the future?
Certainly. Thank you. Let me give you, if I may, Mr. Chair and Supervisor Christie, members of the board, a very broad overview of the research campus. Since January of 2020, when this really launched, we have received as a county about $4.7 million in revenue from the various partners out there. We have, out of a total acreage of about 420 acres, we have all but about 80 acres that are encumbered and being used by economic models out there. When we pulled the data together, as we began to look at the item, I can tell you, from American Battery Factory and Worldview, both were current on all the rent that they were owed at that time. To get into some of the specifics about that, we've got some, looking, we've been talking with some 35 different projects that are looking out at their research campus, with some 14,000 jobs associated with those projects. Mr. DeBonis, if there's more granularity on a couple of these projects that we can provide now or in writing to the supervisors?
Yeah, happy to do that. Chair Scott, Supervisor Christie, Ms. Lesher. In addition to what the county administrator indicated, we're working with American Battery Factory. I was on a phone call with John Kamm, their Chief Executive Officer and President, on their permitting work. So there is a package that's in and under review with Development Services. The last time we were in front of this board was in December of 2024. We made some adjustments to the agreement with American Battery Factory, and that put commencement of work in the February timeframe. Really, John Kamm, there was a letter that he wrote to the county that said, between February and June is when the bulk of the construction work would happen out there. First, site clearing and earthwork, and then more foundation construction towards the latter time period of that. So we're feeling confident that American Battery Factory will, you know, be moving into, to that site construction. Vector Space, you mentioned that. That project went, I think dormant. I guess I'd describe, they, you know, did not move forward after initial agreement with the county. So that's been quite some time. We'd have to go back and find out exactly when that agreement terminated. But as Ms. Lesher indicated, you know, Worldview continues to operate out there, and we're current on the rent payments through the February time period. So with your inquiry, we can go gather up some additional information and report back to the board.
That would be great. Probably a little more comprehensive analysis of it. And if you could include Mr. DeBonis and Ms. Lesher in that report, have those entities that we just mentioned, of course, not Vector Launch, but the other two that are remaining. Could we find out if they have met their employment figures? And also, an explanation of the current status and, and the changes that ever happened with the Tool Avenue property that was bought to house Vector Launch at that particular time? And also, an analysis of what, why Vector Launch, as you say, went dormant? And we could get that from the county administrator, too. And was there, oh, and, and the current manufacturing or mission, I guess, mission state, status of Worldview. What, what, are they still making balloons, or are they doing excursions to outer space? Or that, basically what, what their, their mission and function is? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you Supervisor Christie. We'll move now to item number 17. Workforce Investment Board Governor Recertification. I'll move the item.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? I would just ask, I don't know that we've gotten an update on our local workforce development plan in a while. I know it needed to be aligned with the state plan if we could get the latest status report on that, Ms. Lesher, at some point. All right. Moved and seconded. No further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes 4-0. Item number 18, Fiscal Year 2425, Pima County Gap Funding for Affordable Housing Development and Preservation. I'll move the item.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Item passes 3-1 with Supervisor Christie opposed. Item number 19, Final Platte Without Assurances. I'll move the item.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes 4-0. We've already done 20 through 23, so we're now on to 24. Old Pueblo Community Services to Provide for Pima County, Countywide Rapid Rehousing Program. I'll move the item.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Item passes 3-1 with Supervisor Christie opposed. Moving into the procurement section.
Can I?
Please, go ahead Supervisor.
Chair Scott, I'm wondering if we could move through items 25 through 31?
32.
I'm happy with 32. I'm just kind of looking to see.
Are you staying in procurement?
No, it's real property, so that's what.
I know, but you want to stay in procurement?
No, no, I don't care. If we're, if we're comfortable with 32, I'm okay with that.
How about 33?
That's fine with me, too.
All right.
Any, yeah, okay.
So you're moving.
20, can I move items 25 through 33?
Second.
All right. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All of those items pass unanimously. We're now down to grant application and acceptance.
Chair Scott, I'm not sure, maybe we can take item 36 right now and then perhaps bundle the other ones together?
If we have opportunity for votes.
Individuals?
Not necessarily for discussion, but to be able to vote.
Yeah, I think we're going to do separate.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Let's go then for item number 34. Acceptance for Community and Workforce Development. I'll move the item.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Item passes 3-1 with Supervisor Christie opposed. Item number 35, Also Acceptance of a Grant for Community and Workforce Development. I will move that item.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Item also passes 3 to 1. Item 36, Acceptance for, for Community and Workforce Development. This is from a local foundation to assist with implementation of the Prosperity Initiative. I will move the item.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Thank you, the Connie Hillman Family Foundation. I think it's great that they're putting resources towards the implementation of the Prosperity Initiative.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely. All those, any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Item passes 3-1 with Supervisor Christie opposed. Another one for Community and Workforce Development, Acceptance of a Grant from Department of Economic Security. I'll move the item.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Also, 3 to 1 vote. Moving to a grant being accepted by the Health Department from the Federal Department of Health and Human Services Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. I'll move the item.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Item passes 3-1. Also, being accepted by the Health Department from Arizona Family Health Partnership, I will move the item.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Item passes 3-1. And then finally, Acceptance from the Office of Emergency, from the Office of Emergency Management, from a grant from the Arizona Department of Emergency and Military Affairs. I'll move the item.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That one passes 4-0. Okay, we now have hearings.
Chair Scott?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you think we could bundle these, 41, 42, and 43, and ask if anyone's in the audience to speak in opposition of any of these items?
I don't have objection to that, but I don't know, I don't know with item number 43, how the vote might break down, so we might want to do that one separately.
Can we close the public hearing on all of them?
Yes.
Okay.
So we will close the public hearing. Let's, let's take items 41 and 42. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Do we do a motion and a second?
Oh, I'm sorry.
You moved, I'll second.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Getting ahead of myself. Moved and seconded for items 41 and 42. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Those items pass 4-0. The next one dealing with a fireworks permit, I'm gathering, Ms. Manriquez, that this is a request from a resident of the country club for a, some celebration involving a country club member.
I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Chair Scott, Board Members, it is for the United Way Charity Event at the Tucson Country Club.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And I'll just say parenthetically to my colleagues that I've already heard from Ms. Lesher, that she has followed up with representatives of the fireworks industry who were here two weeks ago to work on some kind of compromise to the items that we were discussing two weeks ago. Item is moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. Item passes 3-1 with Supervisor Allen opposed. Okay, so we're going to move now back to the addendum. And we have, I believe, two items left on the addendum. Item number seven and item number nine. Item number seven was put on the addendum by Supervisor Grahalva. Creation of Pima County Outreach Program to Amend Home Deed Covenants. Supervisor, Supervisor Grahalva.
Thank you. This is, there are several neighborhoods, Jeff Park and Miramonte, that have racist covenant, racist language in their home deeds. And those communities have been reaching out to our office to figure out if there is a path for us to be able to help expedite the process. Right now, it's, it's not incredibly cumbersome, but every individual homeowner has to go to the assessor, submit their information, pay a fee, I believe it's $30, to get this language out of their deeds, which has been deemed unconstitutional. So I was just hoping that the staff could look into a process that would make it easier, and if there is a way for us to work within our county departments to help either waive the fee or reduce the fee. Because there is another county in the nation that just voted and it was done, but I just think that here in Arizona, we're not able to do it that easily. So I was hoping that we could get an idea, oh, I'm sorry, it's from the Recorder's Office, that we'd work with the Recorder's Office to see if there's an easier process for us to do that. And I don't believe, those are the two districts, or the two neighborhoods in District 5, but I think it impacts another, maybe it's your, one of, one of our other districts has also a neighborhood like that.
Mr. Chair, I support this, this resolution, and I appreciate Supervisor Grahalva remanding it back to the administration to see if there's an easier pathway for neighborhoods to do this. And I just want to verify, in this resolution, it states that we propose the creation of a Pima County Outreach, Outreach Program, combined with a series of informal clinics that could enlist experts and legal nonprofits. I'm concerned, well, everything else about the, the entire operation, I support and agree, but what I don't agree is a carte blanche approach to creating a whole new department with a department head and staff. And I just want clarity that this is going to be worked with, worked through what we already have in the Recorder's Office, or perhaps advising our lobbyists to explore ways with the state legislature that there might be issues as well. And if I have assurances that this will not create a whole new department that would, that will remain there forever, I have no problem. The other issue I want to just mention is I don't think this is new and uncharted territory. I read somewhere recently that I think it was the Bledman neighborhood, they went through the same thing, and they could be a great resource and model as well.
Yeah, it was before the law changed that they were able to do it, and then the law changed, and now you have these other neighborhoods that perhaps weren't as organized, or honestly, there are some people that don't realize that it's in their deed until they go through line by line. And so if you, if you feel more comfortable, I'm happy to, we can just say, work within Pima County Departments to come up with a plan, and then if that plan involves including nonprofits or anyone else, then that can be part of the plan that comes back to the board.
The other concern I have, Mr. Chair and Supervisor Grahalva, is what kind of costs will this be involving with the taxpayer? So perhaps that analysis at the county administration level could be explored as well. I don't particularly feel comfortable just giving, again, with no economic impact or fiscal impact on this.
Right. That's why I asked for administration to look into it, because the $30 fee right now is imposed by the recorder to change the deed. And so my hope is that if that's an administrative fee, that's something that we could work to reduce significantly, or figure out a way for us to be able to absorb some of that cost if there are homeowners in that area, but we, in that area that want to change their deed, but don't want to have to go through all the rigmarole to do it. There's also a way, we were hoping, that's where the informational clinics came from, where our Recorder's Office could go out to different neighborhoods and just, you know, during their neighborhood association meetings or whatever, say, hey, there's going to be two weekends that we're going to be here if you guys want us to work with you onsite to try to resolve some of these issues to make it easier.
With current employees.
Correct. Yeah, no, this is not suggesting that we have, we add new staff.
Okay.
Okay.
With those assurances, I would second the resolution.
Okay.
Thank you Supervisors Grahalva and Christie.
Sure. Okay. I'll do that. Yeah. I don't think so yet, but yes, I will. And then Supervisor Christie seconded. Okay.
Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Chair Scott, can Supervisor Grahalva clarify her motion?
Yes. It's basically, you go all the way through, through Recorder's, like nuanced and not well-known. So we, so basically, we're proposing that administration look at a process to reduce the fee or waive the fee, come up with some ways that we might be able to work through the Recorder's Office and current staff to resolve the issue for the neighborhoods that I mentioned and anyone else that might be experiencing that. We do have like a whole map of Pima County that lists different neighborhoods that have that experience that. I'll be happy to forward it to you. Okay.
Thank you. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes 4-0. We're now going to move to the final item for the meeting, that is addendum item number nine, Strategic Planning. Administrator Lesher.
Thank you, Chair Scott, and I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Holmes.
All right. Mr. Holmes.
Chair Scott.
Who must be the most patient person in Pima County.
It's good. This is, this is good work, this, Chair Scott, members of the board, Administrator Lesher. This, purpose of this presentation is to give some, both get some input from the board, more importantly, give a little bit of an update on this next iteration of how we're working towards a strategic planning process here in the county. The last budget cycle that we went through, we presented some strategic initiatives that were meant to be, provide some guidance on how we're going to begin to craft our budget and prioritize what the budget would look like. That iteration now has kind of been turned into these pillars that we've been working with in this next budget iteration. I think what has been missing as we're moving forward with, with, working with, with our board, is to really begin to start looking at this idea of mission and vision, right? The whole process that we're going to be, that we embark on, it really is to prioritize what we're doing and why we're doing what we're doing. And to really make that alignment a little bit more precise. And to really make that alignment a little bit more precise, this is why we're coming forward to you, to begin to kind of tighten that process up. Next slide, please. So the steps that we're going to embark on between now and the end of this fiscal year is to really focus in working with our departments, really start thinking about mission, vision, values with their input, taking a look at the existing guidance and plans that are in place, and then generating kind of this tighter alignment to our current priorities or budget pillars. I mean, the idea is to bring back, at the end of the fiscal year, sometime in, end of June, a framework that you could get, we could get some input from all you on, that would have a draft of some mission, vision, values aligned to our budget pillars. Next slide. With this kind of next iteration in place, we can then begin gathering more input from you all to really embark on a broader input session with the community, and really embark on what would be kind of this much more elaborate strategic planning process. But because we have some things that are absent in the current iteration, we thought it would be best to at least try to tighten up what we had, come back to you with some draft, mission, vision, values aligned to their pillars, and then move forward into the following year with a more detailed plan of what outreach could look like. Last, next slide. Here's a proposed timeline that we're looking at. As you can see, that first blue section is really getting to the end of this fiscal year with what I outlined to be that first iteration or draft, followed by a draft of what it could potentially look like moving into this full, for the full year, looking at the next fiscal year, excuse me, looking specifically what community input could look like, what that discussion could look like, and more importantly, getting your all input on what you would like to, that more elaborate process to look like in the future, right? But I think the purpose of it is just, where are we right now? What's its next iteration will look like? What's the timeline? And then move forward as directed by you all. Next slide? That's it.
Any questions or comments from board members? Supervisor Grahalba.
Yeah, I'm just glad that we're moving forward. I think that it's, you know, when we first got into the office, we created a strategic plan, and I think it's so important that the county has one. And I feel like we do in different pieces, but it's not, you know, somewhere where people can access it easily and understand it. So I think that this is going to be very helpful. I also think that the pillars that were outlined is what the county is doing and what our mission is, and so my hope is that it's not too incredibly complicated to just sort of dovetail the Prosperity Initiative and what other departments are doing as far as the strategic planning processes that they've gone through, and just encouraging other departments to do the same. I think it's going to be really beneficial to hear from all of the different departments on where they see themselves as part of a countywide strategic plan, and ensuring that everyone has a voice in the process, I think is going to be really important. Thank you, I know it's a lot of work. Thank you.
Anybody else? Supervisor Allen?
You know, I'm also very excited about this process, so thank you. I guess the thing that I think about, though, is how we can engage community input and our constituent input into, you know, the vision, the mission, the values, the plan as we move forward. And, yeah, it would be good for us to be kind of thinking about how we do that within each of our districts, and ensure that there is some robust feedback and input as we move forward.
Thank you, Supervisor Allen. I agree with that, and I think that some of the outreach that we've seen being done, not just by staff, but by board offices with regard to the revision of Pima Prosperous, might offer some insights into how we can get community input as well as other measures of encouraging that. I really appreciate, Mr. Holmes, the reference to staff input as we're putting this together, so it is not just a board-driven strategic vision, but one that is also getting a lot of influence and direction from the grassroots. And I appreciate that Supervisor Grahalba mentioned the Prosperity Initiative and tying that in with the discussion of the strategic pillars, especially since when we had a meeting to talk about this prior to today, it was mentioned that the deputy county administrators and the county administrator, although they have had a lot of discussion with directors and department heads about the strategic pillars, there hasn't been as much communication or opportunity for communication between the three of you and department leaders with regard to the Prosperity Initiative. So excited about that. Supervisor Grahalba.
I just wanted to also add thank you to Nancy Cole, who's been a part of all of these conversations, is trying to put all of these pieces together. I just wanted to make sure that she heard from me specifically, and that I know that a lot of this is going to be on her shoulders to try to organize and put together, so I just want to thank her now for what she's done, and in advance for what she's going to be doing. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, that being the case, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.